Hello, everyone. In compliance with chapter 551, open meetings of the Texas government code, I call to order an information session for the Board of Trustees of the Austin- for the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, August 8th, 2024 at 6:06 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present and at the AISD central office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Estound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. So the first item on tonight's agenda is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board. This time allow speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing directly to the school board. We have time for up to 60 speakers. As a reminder, the district continues to provide time during their regular voting meetings of the board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. So this is an opportunity for the board to take part in listening to our community. While we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio record their remarks or to sign up to speak in person. So tonight, we have six people who signed up to speak in person, and we have nine who left a recorded message. So we will now move to the in-person comments. So in order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. So callers though who speak up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called, or you can even line up earlier if you'd like. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise, that you reference the staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. So we ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. So our speakers for tonight, our in-person speakers for tonight, I'm just going to name them in the order that I'll call you. First, we have Teresa Chapa, Doug Greco, followed by Cheryl Bradley, and then Helen Miller, Haley Hilton, and Addison McKenna. So we will start with, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we'll start with Teresa Chapa, please. Thank you. Mic, please.
Oh, okay.
You can start over.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm here to talk to you about Project Lighthouse, the district's solution for connectivity. Erecting cellphone towers in close proximity to schools, adjacent to playgrounds, and directly behind portables is not safe. Cellphone towers emit wireless radiation that causes cancer, heart disease, and neurological problems. Children are especially vulnerable to harm by EMFs because of their thinner skulls and developing neurological systems. No one has proven a cellphone tower is safe. There is a ton of evidence that they are not. The sources the district has cited in their presentations are all tied to the wireless industry. Of course, branch communications will tell you cellphone towers are safe. The school district is a money-making opportunity for them. The health and safety of students and district employees should be the number-one priority. Do not put profit over children's health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Doug Greco. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doug Greco, a former AISD teacher and Education Austin member, and I'm a candidate for mayor in Austin this year. Over two weeks ago, I endorsed the proposed AISD voter approval tax rate election, and I call on all candidates running for office this fall to do the same and make it part of their get out the vote efforts. Since my first days teaching at what was Johnston High 27 years ago, now Eastside, I've seen the state's disinvestment in education impact our students. I've also called on the mayor and city council to invest $40 million new dollars in workforce and education programs in this year's budget, including after-school programs, parent support specialists, ESL programs, scholarship programs, summer youth employment program, and adult workforce development. The more we as a city can invest in these programs, the more the school district's budget is freed up for core teaching and learning and staff compensation. Thank you, board. Our community needs to support this investment in our schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have a former trustee, Cheryl Bradley.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. I'm here because I am extremely upset. July 31st, there was a meeting at LBJ because of an incident that happened. The only person that was in attendance was, from this district, was Deputy Superintendent Patty Rodriguez, Dr. Angel Wilson, and Dr. Amerson. Out of that came a lot of things, but then also what came out of that is the resignation of Sheila Henry because she did not want to be persecuted by this district. You all asked her to come back to LBJ. You all did that. And then you don't stand beside her, you don't stand up with her, you don't even protect her. You leave her out there hanging all by herself. And so now, my granddaughter is a senior. She's going to LBJ. She's a senior at LBJ. She will walk in the first day of school not knowing her principal. If you look at the history of LBJ, you will see that when my grandson graduated in '21, he had had five principals. Five principals. Tell me what other high school has had that? My granddaughter will graduate in '25. She will have had three or four. Tell me what other high school has had that?
Thank you.
You have got to take care of LBJ, and you need to bring Sheila Henry back and take care of her when you do so.
Thank you. Just a reminder to please not name the names of staff, but you can name them by position. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Helen Miller.
Board trustees, President Singh, Superintendent Saver. I want to address a troubling pattern within Austin ISD, the forced resignation of African-American leaders over the past year. This trend is just not a series of isolated incidents, but part of a broader issue that undermines- that undermines our commitment to diversity and inclusion. Despite our efforts to promote equity, it appears that African-American leaders are being systemically pushed out while we see disproportionate increase in white female administrators leading our campuses. This pattern raises serious concerns about environment we are fostering for our staff and students. Our leadership should not reflect the diverse community we serve, and it's essential that we address an imbalance with urgency. We must ensure that all teachers, regardless of race or gender, are supported, valued, and given equal opportunities to succeed. Let us be proactive in creating more equitable and inclusive districts where every leader's contributions are respected and every voice is heard.
Thank you.
I don't know if TA is telling you all to push all the Black professional educated leaders-
Ms. Miller, I'm so sorry, but your time is up. I'm really sorry. Thank you. Next, we have Haley Hilton. Yes, we'll come back to Addison McKenna.
Good afternoon. My name is Addison McKenna. Multiple teachers I had mistreated me by participating in gender-based sexual harassment, making inappropriate jokes, displaying phallic symbols, confronting me about a pending complaint with the assistant principal present, altered and falsified my records. Yet, my school's principal was not held accountable for the teacher's actions. Why is the LBJ principal being held accountable for inappropriate actions of a teacher that is beyond her control? How is that fair? Is it because East Austin schools matter less? Is it about race? There needs to be equity in processes, procedures, and consequences. The executive principal of LBJ is a genuine leader. When I met her, she recognized my potential and encouraged me to pursue leadership. Throughout my conversations with her, I realized that she herself was a true incredible leader. She's left a profound impact on me and so many others, and has the ability to inspire even more kids to be their best selves. She provides a sense of stability for a campus that has been through so many transitions, and it's not right to make her the scapegoat for teachers' inappropriate actions. Kids need leaders more like, need more leaders like the executive principal of LBJ. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Haley Hilton.
I had a horrible, unacceptable high school experience. As you all know, those responsible are still employed, except one who left on their own two years later. Ms. H was one of very few people who tried to be helpful to me in the discriminatory issues I faced as a student in AISD. Ms. H is an exceptional leader, and she should have been and still should be supported. We instituted an HQ with the district, taking accountability for its blunders while supporting its exceptional staff member. Because of the unacceptable experience with my principal, I didn't have a principal to write recommendation letters. When I needed an unofficial principal letter, Ms. H reviewed my information, supplied a letter for me. That's just who she is. She's good for kids.
Thank you. We will now play the recorded messages for public comments, so please listen carefully.
Hi, my name is Mindha Anderson, and I'm a librarian in the district. I'm calling because I'm very concerned about the table that was shared at the last board meeting about cost-saving options for campus staffing, specifically about changing librarians to aides. I know the board is creating guiding principles for budget transformation today, and I would assume that the impact on student success will be one of those principles. So I want to remind our board and central office staff that multiple studies of independent research, such as one from the Institute of Education Sciences in 2022, shows that literacy rates and standardized test scores increase when students have a full-time librarian in their school. Students have access to more academic databases, are more likely to be taught information, literacy, and technology skills, and have increased graduation rates. I hope decision-makers remember that having trained librarians positively impacts our children's success. Thank you.
My name is April Clark. I'm a parent. It is very clear we are in need of budget adjustments. These adjustments can come from a growth mentality or from a place of fear. I choose to believe in our students, teachers, and staff, and believe that as long as we are not setting them up for failure, they can succeed, even with reductions in other areas. School closures and consolidations are a setup for failure. Referencing a study just published by Brown University, closures have not been shown to create savings. Closures result in an increase in days absent resulting in reduced funding. Closures create further distrust. Students leave the district for charters and private schools. Closures ultimately target schools with a higher number of underserved students and minority groups. Studies show that students do not achieve an increase in test scores when combined with higher achieving students at a new school. Studies show an increase in discipline for displaced students. Schools that are shuttered tend to be in areas that make it difficult to rent or use the closed schools. We do need changes, but guardrails alone cannot fix the problems that closures create. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Superintendent Segura, my name is Letitia Anderson, former trustee. Today, I want to address a pressing issue in our district, the alarming decline in African-American administrators. This trend is not just a statistic. It reflects a deeper concern about representation, equity, and opportunity. African-American leaders bring unique perspectives and invaluable contributions to our educational environment. Their absences fell not only in our administration, but throughout our community, which misses out on the benefits of diverse leadership. We must recognize that when individuals don't feel appreciated for their efforts and contribution, it's essential for them to seek environments where their work will be valued and celebrated. As we work to address this decline, let's commit to creating a culture where all voices are heard, all contributions are acknowledged, and every leader is supported. Together, we can ensure that Austin ISD is inclusive, vibrant, and truly reflects of the community we serve. Thank you.
Marie, I am deeply concerned about the stark contrast in how educational leadership is treated in different parts of Austin. My daughter faced three atrocious years with violations of law, policy, and the harms she endured. Despite significant issues, no one faced accountability, and life seemed to move on as usual. In West Austin, you get a building named after you. In contrast, a respected leader from East Austin, who has been instrumental in improving the educational environment at LBJ, has a track record of exceptional service, was treated unjustly for an incident that occurred outside of school beyond their control. This leader is an HQ employee who went to help LBJ in their work going above and beyond to support the community, yet when they needed backing, the leadership failed to stand with them. Our top leaders failed to attend this LBJ meeting, leading to the unrest. The disparity in treatment is alarming and sends a disheartening message about how we value our educators and community leaders. It is crucial for district leadership to reflect on their actions and ensure that all educators, regardless of where they serve, receive fair treatment and support. Our community deserves better. It's time for us to demand accountability and equity in how educational leadership is acknowledged and supported across Austin ISD. Unhappy voters don't support vaters.
Hi, my name is Tara Walker-Leone. I am the librarian here at Bowie High School. I'm about to start my 20th year with Austin ISD. The reason I'm calling today is to make sure the budget for Austin ISD is addressed and the discussion to keep certified librarians in every school. A quick quote I want to read is from the Investing in School Libraries and Librarians to Improve Literacy outcomes. More than 50 years of research across more than 60 studies show that students with access to well-sourced school librarians, with certified librarians, consistently perform better academically and score higher on standardized assessments. So if we know that, and we know that we want to improve literacy in Austin ISD, then we need to keep school librarians, certified school librarians, in every single school. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Tara Bowman. I am the librarian, the very proud librarian, at Lamar Middle School, and I'm also an AISD parent. I was calling because I've seen the potential budget situation, and I wanted just to set out a reminder, I'm sure you guys all know this, but there are over 60 studies that show that students with access to well-resourced school libraries with certified librarians consistently perform better academically and score higher on standardized assessments. So I hope you guys take that into account as you make your decisions. I think having certified librarians on campus is super important, and I honestly, selfishly, it's also the greatest job, so keep that in mind. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi, my name is Delia Sanders. I'm a colleague in regards to Ms.- in light of the news of what has happened, I see that the district or whomever has decided to kindly have actually resigned. When I do feel, and I know for a fact that this has happened at other schools within the district, but I believe those principals, APs possibly are still at those schools or just got a slap on the hand. It is the district that does the background checks, not the principal themselves, so I do believe she was given the position because she was doing so great, but to take it away from her, just to point the finger on someone is not, is not appropriate. AISD, you need to do better. Trustee Hunter, you need to step up, hopefully. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Scott. I am the president of the Colony Park Neighborhood Association, and we work closely with the LBJ vertical team. I'm calling to express my complete disappointment in the events causing the principal of LBJ and the assistant principal to be put on administrative leave. We have lost two excellent people that care about our children in this community, and you have not done a thorough investigation. And this all seems to be racist at, at the least. I am just disappointed in how all of this has, has happened to our community, not just to the LBJ school.
My name is Roxanne Evans of the Eastside Coalition for Quality Education. I'm calling because of the community concerns related to the departure, voluntary and nonvoluntary, of African-American administrators in this district under this administration. The community is paying attention, and the public distrust is growing. The district must do a better job of educating Black students and supporting Black educators and administrators. Do not let our shrinking population numbers make you consider us insignificant. We are not.
Okay, so this concludes public comment. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Yes, trustee Hunter.
Thank you, trustee Singh. I do have a question, or not a question, but I guess I would, we have some people who have spoken today who have really brought up some issues, and I would ask that the administration go back and look about the, I guess the word is not standardization, but how we handle things? Like, is there a procedure or protocol? I'm not aware of that. And I think there's probably, I don't know, I can't speak for other board members, but I'd like to be informed on, like, what are the procedures, the steps? Is there a checklist? Is, like, how do these things- how do these things happen? And I know every case is different, and the administration has to look at everything differently, but for me, I would just like to know how do these, how does it fall out? How do we shake out to get to a certain point in any, any administrative leave?
Thank you, trustee Hunter. Any other questions or comments? Yes, trustee Lugo. And then we'll do trustee Zapata.
Okay. Yeah, I also want to ask of the administration, not for right now, the second, but clarification around accountability standards and how those are applied, what objective criteria, you know, where can board members find that readily available? And I would imagine equally for the public, where might people be able to understand what some standards are, especially when these sensitive issues come up? We can't give details about a specific case, but if we can have some information that describes what those accountability standards are, and then moreover, how those standards are applied appropriately and objectively, given that each circumstance is going to be different, right? But I really do hear the concerns that have been expressed tonight. The other one would be just acknowledgement of the callers who, and speakers who have mentioned budget concerns. Not really a question for the administration, just acknowledgement of, of the comments. And then I would be interested in getting clarifying information about any and all safety factors that went into determining locations of, of cell towers. Again, not for tonight, but just for a future conversation.
Trustee Zapata.
First, I also want to thank the community for bringing it up to our attention. The issue, and I agree with my fellow trustees about learning more about the protocols of how we handle situations. So both have spoken about it, and I too am in agreement with that. Also, certified teachers in the library, yes, literacy is a priority for us, so I'd really like to see, is that, is that a threat that librarians need to be concerned about now? Someone wants to answer to that, superintendent?
Trustee Zapata, I think a lot of our community members are responding to the table that we presented in the last information session, a work session that was held on July 23rd, I believe. In that presentation, kind of in collaboration with the trustees, we decided to include every single thing that wasn't an option. It's just things that were not legally obligated by a school district. And so on that list included many, many, many things that are very, very close to us as an organization. They're all in our budget for a purpose. So at this point, you know, the work to actually identify what cuts will come, that process is getting underway tonight via a retreat in which the board will be able to provide to the administration guidelines, framework, different constraints that we'd want to consider, and then our committee that's been developed will take that and build upon it. So it's not a area of concern, I would say, at this point. Certainly, I've shouted from the top of my lungs about the importance of librarians in here in Austin ISD. We value librarians, but I think it's also important to note that legally, from a requirement perspective, you know, that is something that we value that other school districts don't necessarily include in their budget. And so just being hyper-transparent, we listed all of those things. So hopefully, that helps and provides some context. Trustee Zapata.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Greco, I don't know if he's still here, but thank you for bringing up your proposal of $40 million that you're willing to invest in education, and if you win the election, we will hold you accountable to that. So thank you.
Any other questions? I've got one quick question. I've heard several people make comments about the representation of African-American women in leadership positions in AISD, and I'm just wondering if you all have any data that you could make public that shows, like, over time, how we're doing on that metric?
Absolutely. We've, we've shared that in the past. It's been quite some time. We can definitely provide that. Again, we include both administrators within our campuses as well as central office staff. And so, yes, you've been trending in the right direction, but I certainly acknowledge that, you know, there are, and there have been, you know, losses in the system, but those numbers we can't provide.
Okay. And where, where would people be able to find that when we do?
Well, I'd be more than happy to post it to board docs. It's not, we don't, I don't know, we don't post, like, demographics by position in the district on a website, but I can certainly add that to the, to the board docs as part of a future agenda item, even the work session, really.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
I know we can post it to board docs. Is there, is, would it be a public document at that point for people who don't have access? And maybe you could get it in, like, in an email or something like that? I just, I don't want to, like, say it's on the website. It kind of creates a barrier if you don't have access.
I can certainly look. I'm sure, I'd have to understand who we would want to send all of that information to. Because I would really want to make sure that it got to where it needed to go, trustee Hunter. So maybe we can think about what that would look like. Certainly, board docs is an option. I mean, we can provide information across all demographics, right, to just tell the complete story. Maybe that's the way that we, we do that. That, then we could probably send to everybody, opposed to identifying, you know, who those specific pieces of information would go to, just given kind of what our community is seeking.
Thank you.
Maybe what we can do is part of a weekly or some type of information that goes out, we can provide a link.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. So as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. And I just want to thank all the people who came out today to express their concerns. We appreciate it. All right. Next, the next item is the president's report, and I just wanted, switching topics here, I would like to remind our community to be sure to join AISD this weekend at the Austin Pride Parade. We will meet at the AISD school bus near San Jacinto and East 12th Street at 7:30 PM, and the parade starts at 8:00 PM. And I don't think I have a date here. What's the date for that? Is that Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay. All right. I also want to take a moment to share about the district's enrollment. Now that we're in back-to-school mode, are your kids ready to go back to school, superintendent?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And I just, I felt like this was a good time to, you know, I have recently have heard people asking if the district, like, what our enrollment is looking like? Have we experienced a recent drop in enrollment? And I just wanted to put a few facts out there as we're thinking about back-to-school. So our enrollment before COVID was about 80,000 students. Like many districts, we dropped the number of students during COVID. We dropped about 5,000 students during COVID, and currently, we are at 73,500. We dropped about 5,000 students during COVID, and currently we are at 73,500. This has been actually steady for two years now. So we had about a 9% drop during COVID, which was similar to other urban and suburban districts for that COVID year, but since then, we have seen between a 0% and 1% enrollment loss yearly. And we were flat this last year. The district continues to provide opportunities for families to enroll for schools, including an in-person event this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Central Office, and on campus enrollment days at your local campus on Wednesday, August 14th, 2024, 11:00 AM, to Thursday, August 15th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. And also, last thing as a reminder, the Board of Trustees will hold a special public hearing and board meeting next Thursday, August 15th, at 6:00 PM to consider a tax rate election. That meeting will be open to the public and broadcasting and streaming live on our normal channels. All right. So next is our, we're going to talk about our scorecard. So this item is really just part of our commitment to discuss student achievement, and we have a presentation on Scorecard Goal 3, College Career and Military Readiness. And the goal progress measure we're going to talk about tonight is industry-based certification. This will be the first presentation under our new scorecard. So as one of our goals, this is aligned with our Lone Star Governance Process and the Agreed Order, and the time will count towards our student outcomes discussions, so we don't have a time limit for this item. And before we begin our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does any trustee have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay, great. And I did want to mention, again, I believe we have our handy purple sheet with the questions maybe in here, in our packets, and I would encourage trustees to think about, if you haven't already prepared ahead of time, some questions to ask our administration. So, since we, so I'll now turn to the Florida superintendent Segura for the presentation.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. The team and I will present on the Scorecard 3 CCMR GPM 3.3 Industry-Based Certification. I have joining me Ms. Patricia Rodriguez, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Leading. We also have Dr. Angel Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, and Ms. Tammy Caesar, Director of Career and Technical Education. And so, President Singh, as you mentioned, this is part of our new scorecard that was just adopted on June 20th of this year. And as you can see on Slide 2, Goal 3, bless you, of course. Goal 3, the percentage of annual graduates who demonstrate CCMR by meeting TSI criteria at least one of the following items. Earning an associate's degree concurrent with graduation, enrolling at a post-secondary institution following graduation, earning an industry-based certification, or earning a Level 1 or Level 2 certificate will increase from X% for the class of 2022 to Y% in class of 2027. And so, you can see we have goal progress measures 3.1 through 3.3. The one that we'll be focusing on today is 3.3, which is the percent of 11th and 12th grade students who enroll in courses aligned with an industry-based certification and persist to successful course completion will increase from X in June 2024 to Y in June of 2029. And so with that, I'll hand it over to the team to take it, take us through the rest of the presentation.
Superintendent Segura, Austin ISD prepares students for success in workforce, military, and post-secondary success through the CCMR Accountability Framework. In this framework, we engage students in learning about their post-secondary options after high school, enrolling in dual-credit AP and IB courses, earning a state-recognized industry-based certification, and earning their high school diploma and a post-secondary credential. For the purpose of this presentation, we will focus on the third bullet, earning a state-recognized industry-based certification. Research from the Rutgers School of Management and Labor Relations shares that industry certifications are associated with higher employment and earnings. For individuals without a bachelor's degree, those who hold a certification are more likely to be employed than those with no non-degree credential. That's 82% versus 68%. Next, I will share information about students persisting in CTE advanced courses aligned with IBCs. The percentage of 11th and 12th grade students who enroll in courses aligned with an industry-based certification and persist to successful completion will increase from X in June 2024 to Y in June 2029. The number of upper-level courses completed by our students are normally reported to us by TEA as lagging data. In order to establish a leading indicator for GPM 3.3, we decided to use the percentage of students in grade 11th and 12th who have persisted in CTE advanced courses. In other words, we are monitoring the percentage of students enrolled in CTE advanced courses where an aligned IBC is offered. We see that for school year 23, 24, 46.8 of all 11th and 12th grade students passed an IBC-aligned CTE course. Take a moment to look at the key takeaways. So as I said earlier, this is our first time using this leading indicator. We are currently in discussions to set targets to be submitted for board approval by Ms. Jay Brown, hopefully tonight. From school year 22, 23 to 23, 24, there are similar declines for all student groups, with the exception of students of two or more races who posted an increase of 1.3%. Looking at the data, 23, 24 should be viewed as the baseline as we move forward with this leading indicator. As mentioned in the key takeaways, the data shows a decline in most student groups. The data from this chart is built off of TEA IBC-approved course lists. We utilize this list to work with campuses to create specific programs of study. Now, Deputy Rodriguez will review with us our root cause analysis.
Thank you. Okay, so Teaching, Learning, and Leading has identified three root causes that really impact our data and what our current reality is right now. In all of the three causes, there's a common thread, and that common thread is alignment. And so, we know how important it is for us to engage, educate, and support all of our campuses and our families. We also want to ensure that in the three causes, what we revealed is the need for our alignment in messaging, alignment in the support that's provided from the district to our campuses, and also the alignment in how, and then how often, we engage with our students and our families. So the first root cause is around course decisions. So we recognize that there are opportunities to establish stronger supports, practices, and communication for our students and our families to really understand what the impact is of their choices when selecting courses. And through a more aligned counseling plan and a set of practices throughout the districts, our students really should be given the tools to reflect on their own choices and then make better decisions for themselves. And they can only do that by better understanding what selecting certain courses, how it's going to impact their future pathways. And so they really need to have more opportunities to reflect, and that's part of the practice in their decision-making, but then also the tools to support the pros and cons before they make their final decisions. Student and family engagement is also an identified root cause. We know that there's several missed opportunities to really engage with our families and our students in a way that fosters true partnership and not just a sit-and-get or a blast of information. We've also heard from our families that they would appreciate more aligned communication, and also that information, they're really asking it for it to be clear, so really concise, what are the details we need to know, and avoiding a lot of that academic jargon, because sometimes that causes the confusion. So they're reading the information, but it's like, I hear it and I read it, but I'm truly not receiving and understanding what it means. So we want to also offer better feedback channels so that their questions and concerns can be answered, not just like at the beginning of the year or through a survey, but that we also have an opportunity to address all of their needs in real time. And then lastly, increased alignment. We are super thankful for the support of Superintendent Segura and his vision and how he has really reorganized teaching, learning, and leading in a way that is truly collaborative across all of our departments. We're going to continue to grow in this area. We've taken leaps and bounds, and so in the departments and how we organize, how we plan, how we implement, how we collaborate, some of these things include current data sharing, cross-level committees, and then collaboration across all departments. We know that that's a really good, good start, but we also understand that there's a needed lift for additional work to make sure that we are all cohesive and aligned. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Angel Wilson. She's going to share some strategies and then also some responses to some of these root causes.
Thank you, Deputy Rodriguez. We are providing ongoing professional development for counselors and CTE instructors to ensure that all educators understand the impacts in program implementation and alignment, and that they are aware of potential implicit biases. Ongoing training prepares the staff to provide guidance to students regarding multiple advanced pathways that are available to them. We are also expanding the ways in which we educate and inform the campus and community about career opportunities related to our programs of study and industry-based certifications. This is inclusive of students, teachers, families, and our industry partners. It will ensure that all members of our community have a clear understanding of programs, pathways, and expected outcomes. With our third strategy, continuous collaboration with the school leadership team and also with campus administration helps us to monitor the systematic progress of program implementation and communication while adjusting to be responsive to student and community needs. On the next slide, we will dive deeper into specific strategies that our secondary school leadership team is currently implementing, and then some new strategies that we plan to implement this school year. As a secondary school leadership team, we have diligently designed, refined, and monitored programs and processes aimed at strengthening our career and technical education programs by focusing on recruitment and retention of CTE students in advanced courses as measured by their completion of the pathway and obtaining an industry-based certification. In column 1, you'll see the design stage. In this stage, we are focusing on secondary outcomes as a coherent system of sustainable support. In collaboration with multiple departments and teams, we co-created systems to monitor progress. This ensures that we work together and effectively with students, campus staff, and district leadership to achieve strong outcomes. We are also reimagining our Executive Director of CCMR CTE position, which just posted today, as Executive Director of Secondary Outcomes. This role will include and support collaboration across various areas, including CCMR, early college pathways in technology, P-Tech, career and technical education, secondary academic counseling, and frequent touchpoints and collaboration with advanced academics. During the design stage and beyond, this role will support partnerships with the Austin Community College and other relevant organizations and institutions, excuse me. In column 2, we see the refine stage. We've made several key adjustments to our processes to better meet both student and campus needs. These changes are designed to support our system of schools as a whole while also providing even more tailored coaching and support at the individual campus level. Through parent and community engagement, we are able to enhance understanding of the programs of study pathways, which can be complicated for a lot of our families to understand, and we also want to make sure that we're aligning with the needs and expectations that not only we have as a district, but our families and investor partners and industry partners have in order to ensure success not only in high school, but in college career and workforce readiness. Additionally, we have developed comprehensive support systems to aid students in completing their career in technical education, CTE courses, and pathways. This includes identifying and addressing any gaps in access and opportunities, especially for specific student groups. Lastly, we are focused on strategic coaching and feedback for our leaders and teams, which is inclusive of targeted professional development for our principals to ensure they have the tools and support that they need to lead effectively. In column 3, we see the monitor stage. In this stage, we are making significant strides in our data management and practices to better support students and campuses. Our new dashboard is a centralized data management system that allows us to streamline coaching and support by focusing on key data points that are crucial for our efforts. During our Leadership Institute 2024 session, campus leaders, that's all principals and then designated assistant principals that are designated as a CCMR admin, they attended a training to learn more about this new monitoring tool, and we felt the excitement and the energy in the room, because it's been a long time coming, and they all celebrated because they are no longer operating off of antiquated Google spreadsheets. We will continue to revisit this tool throughout the school year to ensure campus teams feel confident in using it and to monitor student successes. Ongoing district and campus data-informed practices are designed to encode success for our learners and aim to ensure that our approaches are effectively tailored to meet the needs of each student. These enhancements are pivotal in our ongoing efforts to provide targeted support and to drive success across our schools. In our last slide, this concludes our presentation on Goal Progress Measure 3.3, Industry-Based Certification. We are excited to continue the work in providing access and opportunities for our scholars to be college, career, and military-ready by refining our systems to ensure that we are sustaining this goal for all students. We are now ready for questions.
Thank you. Trustees, questions?
Thank you for this information. I am curious in terms of what is working so far, if you have ideas about what types of industry-based certifications are currently most used and achieved by our students, and what are some industry-based certifications that you see the most potential for, where if we improve our offerings and our alignments, that we'll see a lot more students take advantage of them?
Thank you for the question. So we continue to refine, and we meet with campus principals, like, in October, and our, we just met with our department chairs yesterday, and we look at our programs of studies and see what industry-based certification is best for our students. Right now, the Arts and AV is leading the charge with the Adobe certifications.
And are there some areas where you feel like there's a lot of potential that if we were to offer more courses in them, or better align and communicate about those opportunities to students, that we would see a lot more students take advantage of them? Things that students are hungry for, perhaps, that we don't offer?
One of them in particular is cosmetology, and we offer it, but we noticed, like, at Travis Early College High School last year, that was a huge push for it. We did student interest-based surveys, and we also got teacher input, and students were really, really rallying behind that, even in our CAC meetings as well. So we like to get a gauge and a pulse of our students, and we notice that sometimes it trends, you know, from one set of years to the next set of years, what our students are interested in. I think, once we get the student interest, it's a challenge to find certified instructors that would leave their industry-based field to come into education. Oftentimes, they're taking a pay cut, but what it says is that when they come, they're coming for the kids. And so we find people that are passionate and that are inspired by the students and wanting to pour into them. And then also, cosmetology is a huge requirement. Sometimes a student says, I want to take it, you know, I may like this one part or aspect of it, but then you don't realize, wow, I have to accumulate, you know, 5,000 hours within the field. And so what we want to focus more on is, once we get students into the program, we want them to persist to mastery and to persist to successful completion of that pathway. We notice dips and declines. They're interested in it in 9th and 10th grade, and then we notice that we see huge drops when they get to 11th grade or 12th grade. And I think that's the importance of this board monitoring goal, and the newness of it, we appreciate it, because this is measuring persistence. It's just not how many people are in the seat in 9th grade or 10th grade, but how many people actually persist to the advanced-level CTE courses to show that they are actually workforce-ready.
And I'm curious also when thinking about what worked and what didn't work so far. I appreciate the new strategies that you're embracing and the new technology that you're using, but just looking at how successful our schools have been in this work in the last few years, do you see bright spots of campuses or particular programs where the strategies are working well currently to provide these opportunities to kids? Or the opposite, do you see areas where there are priority schools, and you don't have to name the schools, but do you see particular schools where you think we really need to invest heavily in improving opportunities at those schools? So I'm looking for, in terms of what do we, what worked and what didn't work, do we see schools that are highlights and schools where there's a lot of growth, and/or programs, like, certification types where there's highlights and needs?
Yes. So one thing that works, what we've noticed is, there are competing priorities, and it's a good thing, it's not a bad thing. There are students that are interested in different things, and sometimes the school is built or designed in a way to where it encodes success for scholars, but it's for one particular pathway or program. So we see that, you know, parents may go to one particular school or want to send their students here because this school is designed in a way to where you will graduate as a global graduate with an IB learner profile. And this school may draw interest because it's designed in a way to where all of academies are built around ensuring that students are supported in completing a CTE pathway. There are other schools where students may take interest in because of the AP advanced courses, and so what we notice is the trends, even with the course, universal choice sheets and trends, even with transfers, it's all based on the way that schools are designed and the pathways that parents, and it's perception too. So it may not necessarily mean that this pathway is the most successful, but perception in the community is, send your child here if they have an interest base that's geared towards this pathway. What we want- What we want to do is open that access and opportunity to where we are not funneling students one place or another place just based on a particular pathway, but you can go to any of these schools and the options are varied and widely available to you. And I think one of the beauties in the CTE program is this is something that is widely available on every campus. So we just have to refine those systems and the best way to do it is to attract great teachers. What we have noticed is that students don't go to a school because of a new build. We definitely know that here. They don't go because of a new bill, they go because of the teachers and the people and the community, the people that are in place, the adults that care and that draw relationships. So what we've been looking at is retention of teachers. In programs where we see there are stable teachers and veteran teachers, we've noticed that the programs are actually more successful. They're widely known on campus and it's a big draw and pull in the community. So we're focusing on developing recruiting teachers, also retention and sustainability and ensuring that those relational connections are made and that the community and parents are aware of the pathways through the multiple forms that we choose to engage with parent and community.
And my last question on, in trying to understand what are some of the options for industry-based certification? I found the list on the TEA website for a list of certifications and I think there's, I lost count, but there were over 300 listed. Many are in the same category, right? So there's multiple levels.
Like Adobe.
The scores of different categories. As a, do parents and students have a central place where they can look to see what are some of the certifications available at their campus or in our district where that's, they can see of those 300 plus, which ones are available on my campus?
Yes, we provide them with a program of study document that they could share. Most campuses modify that and make it their own, put their school header on it, but we give them the basics. We tell them where the certification is aligned and what year it's offered.
So if I wanted right now to look for my child's high school, I could look up and find out right now what is available probably?
Some have it on their website, but not all.
Okay. So that goes along with the alignment strategy of trying to?
100%.
And communication and engagement, okay.
Yes.
Awesome. And is it appropriate then, you know, I know it's not as part of this presentation, but is it appropriate for the board to have access to the campus-level data in terms of the students' achievement of these certifications and the course offerings? So we can have that as an addendum to the?
I think that's provided.
Or perhaps at the next, between now and the next monitoring, so we have a better idea?
Some have been provided through our board response submissions. So yes, you're able to have that data.
So what we can do is just, we'll amend and upload and then send it via boardification, but also upload it to the board docs.
And I'm also okay with that being on the timeline for like the next update, you know. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would be happy to view that in a later date as well.
I would say it was provided in answer to some questions that I had and I really appreciate that you shared it and I think it would be fantastic to have in a board docs for our community to see as well as that list that Trustee Kaufman just referred to, to see that huge, long variety that's out there. So thank you.
Oh, I see, I see it. Okay. Sorry, I missed your 16,000 questions.
Yeah.
I didn't see the link in there. Thank you. Thank you for all this work. Thank you for focusing on this area. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Did you have a question? Trustee Gonzalez?
A couple of my questions were addressed by Trustee Kaufman, but I apologize for my tardiness. I was at Akins for their back-to-school kickoff. But one of the things that was referenced earlier was the slides that we were shown in the last meeting about potential cost savings or things that our district chooses to invest in that are not required by the state. And one of the things in relation to this item that caught my eye was the choice to offer CTE at the middle school level. And it was clear on that slide what the impact to the budget would be if we no longer did that. But I was curious if you could speak to what impact a pivot in the budget like that would have on your strategies as it relates to this GPM?
I'll start and give specifics. It definitely impacts the pathways for sure. And then we go back to one of the root causes when, you know, students don't start a pathway in high school. They start it much earlier than that. And so that definitely would have an impact to the students making a choice, potentially having to pivot or, you know, that not being offered anymore. Do you see some specifically that's starting in middle school?
If I remember correctly, that was a sixth-grade course that was talking. We don't receive funding for it. So, you know, if we don't have that, then students don't get to explore before they get to seventh and eighth grade. So it should have a little bit of an impact on it, but I think we could pivot to and do something different. But that's usually where they decide, I want to be in engineering, I want to be in STEM in the sixth grade because they cover all of the 13 career clusters that we offer.
I'm sorry, Trustee Gonzalez, what was the, I missed the very first piece of it. What was the resource lost or the?
There was, I believe the amount was 1.5 million that was on the potential cost-saving slide related to reducing or removing CTE offerings at the middle school level.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this side?
Oh, I had one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So you talked about Dr. Wilson, the new dashboard that was rolled out this summer and the training that happened at the Leadership Academy. And I saw in the responses to Trustee Hunter's questions that 100% of secondary EDs, high school principals, assistant principals, college and career advisors, at least one staff on every campus had been trained in the usage of the dashboard. So essentially we're talking about adult behaviors changing in response to the data that we're looking at. So aside from the number of adults trained, are there other like leading indicators that would demonstrate to you that this change in strategy is successful?
Yes, thank you. Adult behaviors are a huge part of student outcomes. A lot of times the data for student outcomes doesn't change until adult behaviors do. And so we focus in, while we don't have the students in the building right now, we focus in during the summer on just extremely supporting our leaders, principals, campus administrators, and our executive leadership teams in a very systematic way because we know that when they are fully supported, then our students will live up to whatever expectation is that we put before them when they get into the classroom. The big thing about the dashboard is this really is an interface for us to be able to work in real time. So in the past years, what we've done is we've operated off of spreadsheets and we've all had different information on the spreadsheets and it's lagging data. So campuses have to literally wait until the end of the month to get an updated TSI college readiness report for students or whatever the case is. They wait until the end of the month and then you depend on one person to do the data entry for that. We noticed a lot of human error in that report and then also just using registrars, even centralized staff, you face a lot of inequities in that data and it doesn't necessarily mean that there's a disparity, but it could just be inaccuracy with the way the information is captured. To be able to have this in real time, in the past, CCMR accountability has rested on the shoulders of one administrator and it's normally an AP that's designated to be the CCMR admin. So when we introduced this and rolled this out at Leadership Institute, we were excited to see the hands go up because principals and APs said, hey, you're telling us that you want us to have this intricate wraparound system to where teacher leaders are a part of this work, counselors are a part of this work, and then you've only funded us three super users. And of course, we're doing it because of budget constraints, but principals were actually sitting there planning with their teams on what funds can we utilize, our CCMR funding for the campus to ensure that we have, you know, increase our super user access because our counselors need to be added on to this. Our counselors are the ones that are meeting with students individually. They have more high-level, deeper conversations with the students than our designated CCMR admin or principal do. So one of the beautiful things I did this morning, which I was excited about, was I was able to go to Covington Middle School and speak to all elementary, middle, and high school counselors my first time in front of them. Very beautiful, beautiful experience. And we talked about the dashboard, we talked about our goals and what we'll be monitoring and the counselors were excited to be a part of that conversation because a lot of times they work in isolation. And so now with academic counseling being under secondary school leadership, we are going to be more closely aligned. And so when those students go into the office and they have conversations with their counselors, the counselor can say, wait one moment, or when the parent comes in the office, wait one moment, let me pull up the dashboard. And they're able to see in real time and advise students, not based on, I want to get out of this class because, you know, it's really hard or it's interrupting or interfering with this class, but they can pull up the dashboard and see exactly where the student is along the continuum and the pathway and then be able to effectively advise the parent and the student on this is the way we can best support you.
And can I just put in a plug? I really want to thank the partnership with Chief Rodriguez and all of his team members in IT. They are the behind-the-scenes and sometimes they don't get the thank yous. They are the ones that supported us in really making it happen and we would give them the vision and they would just, you know, they would take it and say, we're going to make it happen. That's how, that, yes, we can do it. So I just really want to give thanks to him and to his team. They were extremely supportive to teaching, learning, and leading.
Thank you. Trustee Hunter?
I want to thank Dr. Wilson because I was going to ask a question, but you actually answered the question because we did train principals, but day-to-day, they're not making the touch with the student, it's the counselor. And this is going to come back in the conversation we're going to have later on this afternoon about those touchstones, not letting a kid jump out of a class or not, like, let's think about this, where are you? How far in are you? And just have that conversation. It's so important because they're the ones and I think kids can trust them a little bit, not more, but it's in a different way, right? Because they've been working with you and getting you in your classes and supporting you. So I like the fact that those users are really, that's why when I got my answer back from my question, I was saving that question for in here, but I thank you for answering it.
Vice President Foster?
This is like a chorus of, I don't know what, but I've really appreciated from Trustee Kaufman on down the line. And I love the expanded access to the data that makes a difference. And really at the heart of one of my concerns and questions is really around just human resources, people and their capacity to do it all.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So do, do we have the resources in place to address the things identified in the sort of root cause analysis? What was that page, slide six or whatever? Especially the human resources, like the dedicated counselors? And I was excited to hear, well, the CTE instructors are going to be trained in some of these things too, so that expands it and has you think differently. But like nuts and bolts, do we have enough folks with enough understanding to serve all of the students in these positions?
We have a really strong team, although I would always say I would never turn down additional. One of the reasons for the new, the reimagining of secondary outcomes was for that reason. We often work in isolation, not because we want to or we are not wanting to share data, but sometimes in just the day-to-day of our work, we can only, like, we have like a tunnel vision. And so really the vision for this was our CTEs working with CCMR, with advanced academics, and they're coming together regularly. And we're not sitting down and having meetings. They are going to go and do observations together as a team. They're going to come back and do data sessions as a team. They're going to be able to come back and really identify what the gaps are in real time and then work together as a team. So do we have the capacity? Yes. The bandwidth, yes, it is a stretch. Definitely it is a stretch, which is why it's super important for us to really train our leaders on a true coaching cycle. And then when we read the information and we read the data, what do we do with it next? And how do you relate that in real time to make sure that it gets done? Are we there completely yet? No. And that's something that we have to build out. But when you have, we have a great start with the secondary outcomes team working together, it's one vision. So we don't have Ms. Tammy going in with one set of vision and one protocol or way of doing things. Everyone is aligned. So it is a start.
So in addition to training broadly, giving more folks access to the key data, there's also the tool side. So you were thinking IT. I'd like to hear about sort of simplicity, clarity, precision in the things that are being communicated to students. So I'm trying to explain something and I often, I'm up here trying to ask a question and it takes me forever. And yet, if there was a toolkit that really helped sharpen me and that I could not only have been coached on it, but I can also turn to it really quickly and I'm able to explain something or engage a conversation because not only is there the coaching for it, but there's the other side of the equation. And I hear you going in that direction where we're sharpening the tools, but could you talk more to that piece? And I hope I'm making sense.
Could you rephrase the question?
Yeah, I definitely was thinking. I saw three quizzical looks, like what is?
No, no, no. You had me on the toolkit portion. So does that toolkit exist? Yes. There's different toolkits. So we're trying to align all of the departments to come up with that one. Sort of like oversimplifying that. And that's something really that Chief Rodriguez and his team pointed out some of those things that, and I'm going to like a custom report. We have all of these custom reports and campuses will ask for, we want them to be able to have sort of like that align, that one thing. Not that you can't ask for different reports, but that we're all looking at the same thing. And so while everyone has different toolkits, we want to create that one. And we want to train starting from the top all the way into the classroom so that the principal has that, kind of like that overview and they understand what the counselors and the assistant principals and the ones who are actually supporting some of that work, what's in that toolkit and how it's going to be used. So do we have one yet? No. Is that what we're going to work towards this year? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
There's also the vertical alignment piece, which has been very critical in this process. So last school year, our Paretta's Middle School, their admin team did a lot of collaborative support meetings and walks with Akins Early College High School because Akins has a very strong system of schools within the school with academies and they produce a high number of students that persist in 11th and 12th grade in advanced CTE courses and also who earn IBCs and associate's degrees. So the principal at Akins and the principal at Paretta's are now collaborating and talking with each other and they've built a program up at Paretta's to support the work so that when students transition to Akins, it's a seamless transition. We've seen the same thing with Marshall Middle School and their alignment to the health science courses with LBJ and Northeast. So what we have been working to do very strategically in our principals' meetings all last school year was to have leveled meetings, but then also have vertical meetings where principals are talking to each other with the feeder schools and you're not only strengthening your campus and your school, but you're strengthening your feeder. So your entire vertical team alignment piece. And I think that's important because students have a hard time transitioning from elementary to middle school and they have a hard time transitioning from middle school to high school. So the uniformity helps and it also helps with parents when we look at certain programs like Avid. I know Trustee Hunter's going to nod her head and other things like that. It helps with those programs and the alignment piece to see that consistency and uniformity. And the more uniformity we see on campuses, the better we are able to offer centralized support. I talked to the principals and admin during LI and that was one of the main things we talked about. In order for us to better support you, it works when we act as a centralized system so that we can operationalize supports in order to leverage that across campuses and across the district.
Does that also help in terms of your communication with families and caregivers? So they understand like what they're getting into and what it means for them to be supportive and what really the options are? And so the same sort of question with that, which is, is there, are we working towards simplicity, clarity, precision in the messages to the parents and how to get it out there and how to work with them? Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey there. This is a really great presentation. Thank you so much for the work. I was really intrigued by slide 11, if you don't mind putting that up there. That shows. Yeah. Did you guys present that? Okay. Because like, I want to make sure, like, this slide should be in every newspaper. In Austin tomorrow because this tells a story, like on your leadership day at Austin High. It was like, what's her, what was it? Like, we have a story or what was the name of that? Tell your own story. Okay. So y'all, here's the story. Tell me the story. What's happening here?
Yeah. So I want to credit the work of Tammy Caesar and her team in alignment with our secondary executive director team, in alignment with our campus principals and our campus admin. So we, I want to say we've had the most frequent touchpoints and Tammy's team has remarked to us that they've had the most face time with principals last school year. And the more face time we have with principals, the higher we see, the more successes we see with student success stories and data stories. Also Tammy has had the most face time with our team. I don't know if that's a plus or not for her, but she meets with us weekly every Friday in our team meetings and we have data. she meets with us weekly every Friday in our team meetings and we have data points we review. And as we're looking at it as an ED team, they are given a focus and a charge for this is what I'm gonna go to the campuses to and support with my caseload of schools. What we noticed is that just putting individualized data folders in front of principals. We did it in our fall principals' meetings for high school and middle school. Put the data in front of them for high school with IBCs and they got to work on their own just by us having conversations and then partnering them with schools that we see, um, that do really well at this, like Navarro High School, Aikens Early College, High School, partnering them with schools that have a system that's built around this. Principals were able to ask and to hear their strategies and then they were able to inform their master schedule planning and a lot of other nuances and details around just hearing what works around them. Principals want to hear from like-minded schools. So if I'm at Northeast, I want to hear what Eastside is doing. I want to hear what Navarro is doing. So we strategically group schools as well. So that way they learn from each other. They're able to hear what's working and what's not working. And then we attack it very strategically. One of the cool things about Austin ISD is that we are able to fund these licenses, site licenses for students to get certified. So this is at no cost to them. This is taken on by our CTE department. So if we have the funding forward, our students are able and apt to, to apply themselves to whatever the challenge is. One of our biggest challenges last school year that I wasn't anticipating, it came with educating teachers around, um, why this is important. Because some teachers and some students are like, well, why, what is the importance of the certification test? If I'm going to graduate and my passion is in this area. So I know that was one of the questions that came up and it was a question that we tackled with a lot last year. Like, how do we show the relevance for this to teachers and to students in a way to where this is not like a checklist for them to do, but they actually see the joy and the value in having this added to their toolkit when they leave as a graduate for Austin ISD?
So, I mean, I just want to make, so just tell me if I'm interpreting this graph correctly. Because this is the first time I think I've ever seen like this kind of growth in anything.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak to this.
Yeah, like, cause I mean, I see a, I see almost.
And all of that was great. We did all of that, right?
Cause like I see, I just want to make sure, yeah, like we have three, I just want to make sure the public sees this. And in 2021, we had 305 students getting certified, right? Industry-based certifications. This last school year is 2074. That's like almost seven times more. So tell me why.
So we got our, uh, teachers, like we gamified it. We did leadership boards. We sent it out to them and we had the leaders. The principals start sharing it out among the campuses and say, hey, look what this teacher's doing. Look what this teacher's. And they all did this because I'm gonna buy them a banner. And they want to have this banner that's gonna be in the hallway that's gonna say that they were the industry-based champion for the year. So they, it really inspired them. I said, I should have started that 305.
That's amazing.
Who knew that a banner would make them want to be the leader? I mean, and they were having challenges all over the place.
So that's fascinating. So it's like changing the culture is what it sounds like to me. And so when, you know, when I'm looking and, and creating the tools that allow that culture to thrive, right? So, you know, when I look at the, um, but then like, so that beautiful graph doesn't mesh as well with what's on slide four, right? And so that's what I'm trying to reconcile. We see like GPM 3.3 is talking about, it's supposed to be a predictor of, you know, the industry-based certifications, but we're kind of not meaning targets here. So is this actually, like, tell me, like, is this actually a predictor?
Jay taught me this. The theory of action, if students, if we get more students in CTE class to complete those, they would be able to take the aligned IBC. So those numbers would go up.
Okay.
It's the theory of action.
So it's going even more.
Yeah. And, and what you aren't able to see in the data is as you go from left to right in the table, we've had to refine the programs of study to match the new TDA guidelines with IBC-aligned courses. So if you look at the farthest left column of the table, this was at a time when 10th graders were represented in the data and you didn't necessarily have to persist and be in a CTE advanced level course in order to take the IBC. So now the requirements have changed. It's gotten a little bit more rigorous and we have to see that students persist through those courses in order to qualify to take the IBC.
Okay. That's really helpful. Great. Thank you. Secretary Boswell?
Yes. Um, first, thank you for asking about slide 11. I have been kind of bouncing in my seat waiting to hear about that one. It's good. I'm really glad you asked about it because I do think it's really notable. And, and I would love to go back and just really clarify, um, some of the understanding of, and thank you for explaining that the, the rules had changed between, so that's part of what we're seeing in the data. I assume we're seeing some COVID ripples still working their way through this. But really interested in the, the percent of students who are persisting all the way to completion and that spike, that just means there are more students somewhere in this pipeline. So our percentage that are completing has stayed similar, but the total number of students being served is going up.
Yes.
Yes.
And the line graph, graph is representative of the IBCs earned. This could also mean that once, one student is represented multiple times in the data if they've earned more than one IBC.
And you shared that also in our question. So thank you for that. Um, I appreciate that. And, and I want to be really sure on slide four, um, and that slide 11 is very exciting. So thank you for that. And I hope that when you come back with this data, we'll get to see that, um, progress again. So thank you. I appreciate it. And Ms. Caesar, I'm thinking about, I'm getting texts from Austin Energy. We may all be on our high energy use days. And then the next day they're telling me how I did relative to other houses. It's like, ah, a little behavioral economics. It works. So yeah, that's, but that's what your comment made me think of with, with the campuses. So I want to be really, really sure that I understand really clearly what we're talking about on slide four. This is only data about our 11th and 12th graders. We're not looking at kids who took a, you know, our students who took a course in eighth grade or ninth grade or 10th grade here and didn't persist. These are students who've gotten all the way to that 11th or 12th grade and how many had gotten all the way so close and then didn't complete. Yes. Okay. So that's helpful to know. And it, and so I have a question about that then. Students, you know, either who get this close and don't complete or students who start earlier, do you still feel like there's value in those courses for those students to have been on that path? Even if they, they veer off for one reason or another and choose to do something different?
Yes. Yes. We talked about that, that a lot of students, well, some students, they may start a pathway in seventh grade. And so they may not persist all the way to 12th grade, but persist into 10th grade or 11th grade. There's extreme value in that. We've piqued their interest whether they choose to explore that or go deeper within the course of their high school years or whether they choose to pick that back up when they leave. We also see the connectivity piece. So if our students aren't connected to CTE courses or pathways, whether they're connected to APIB, whether it's fine arts, whether it's athletics, whether it's UIL or maybe even a non-UIL-based club, if every student is connected to something, we see the data trend positively in so many areas, academically, discipline, attendance, satisfaction with school panorama data, like you'll just see it represented in a lot of different areas. So we know that if we connect them, whether it's not here, but it's somewhere else, we want to make sure that every student is accounted for because that speaks volumes to their story in Austin ISD.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And, uh, yeah, I think that's always really exciting data to see. Um, and I know we see it echo in a lot of the things we're talking about. So thank you for sharing that. And I really appreciate, one of my questions was what, um, individual programs that are bright spots or individual campuses that are bright spots are learning from each other? I heard a little bit about that, kind of what are we as a system learning from that? Um, I, I love that they're connecting with each other, that that, but kind of as a system, what more are we going to do to continue building on that? Banners plus.
So we, Aikens is doing very well with their academy structure. So we, a lot of the principals are learning from that. They could talk more about that. And then Ann Richards, you know, kids get to explore sixth, seventh, and eighth. And then they have the pathways that they choose and they only have three. So they have to get it right in middle school before they go on because they only have three pathways to go. So that's working very well. So those are like the two that are working really well as far as keeping the kids in the advanced classes.
And it's the culture that's created on the campus. So with Ann Richards, there is no opt-out. All of the students at Ann Richards, they have to choose one of those three pathways. And I've sat in a class where they were actually going over it and reviewing the pathways. The teachers, they rotated by classes because it was decision day. They were gonna have to pick what pathway they entered. You notice the same thing with academies at Austin High School and some of the other schools. But the more you see the buy-in, the entire 100% buy-in from all teachers, staff, and campus leaders speaking that same language, then you'll see the increased engagement in students wanting to get into those pathways. So it's just, it, it's based around what the school has, um, chosen to design themselves around with completing those pathways.
Fantastic. And, um, I would love to go back and, and really look at the data, um, knowing that it's not, we're not comparing necessarily apples to apples, but across the years we're seeing. And, and what can you tell me about how you think COVID is showing up in that data? Kids who didn't have a chance to be on a campus doing a hands-on pathway and kind of that system got broken for them or that sequence? And as we have students who are now coming in, you know, our new high schoolers will be all four years in high school now physically in the building. And how do, what do you expect to see going forward? So kind of looking back, how's that impacted things and do you expect to see a change as we go forward?
On pre-post COVID. Um, with the pre and post-COVID, what we've noticed is, you mentioned it. They, students had limited opportunities to actually be able to apply themselves with the learning tasks and being in real time, um, in the classroom. So we talked about, I guess during COVID years, there were opportunities for them to maybe come to the school, pick up a kit, take it home with them and, and follow along. But there's something to be said about being in a culture and a classroom amongst your peers where you're able to be a risk taker, persist, get the immediacy of feedback, and be hands-on. I do want to give a nod to Travis Early College High School. Uh, they have one of the best culinary arts programs there is with Jaima Vaughn. And she has helped to connect us with a lot of different industry partners. And that is a program and a model to watch. She is a staple in that community and kids want to be a part of the culinary arts program. Even if they don't like culinary arts, they love Jaima Vaughn. And so that is, she's a teacher leader on campus and we use her also as a model for our CTE programs and pathways.
Fantastic. It's also a really fun place to go to a meeting because they feed you very well in that really cool room they have. So do you have an estimate, looking at, um, kids who get kind of that far and we're looking at, at numbers kind of hovering or even declining? Do you have an estimate of what a reasonable, I know we're about to get, um, targets, right? But what is a reasonable ceiling for that data? Cause kids are going to make different choices once they get that far. We're not gonna get 100% of kids that, that, who get that close through. Um, kind of what would you like to see and what do you think is a reasonable ceiling to be considering?
We'd like to see about 50% retention in those areas. So when we looked at our goals and we set our targets and we talked about it, we just kind of went to go a little bit higher than what we are now. But we thought we could make like the 55%, 50 to 55.
We're estimating our Y percentage to be 55%.
Okay. Thank you. And do we have a sense of how many of our students aren't completing because they're dropping out? Do we know, you know, who's not completing because they're not completing high school? I know we have a, you know, a really strong graduation rate, but I know we do have kids who leave. Have we correlated that?
We don't at that, at this time, but like I made a note of all your stuff to try to get with IT and see if we can get that out of frontline. But we don't at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And then one more question, kind of as we look ahead at the needs in our budget and the savings in our budget, how do you expect these programs to show up in these conversations? I know looking campus to campus, we have some programs that are serving big numbers of kids, some programs that are serving really small numbers of kids. We have duplication in different places. And, um, as you said, we want to offer that rich menu of opportunities as broadly as we can. So have you given thought to how we should look for this or think about this as we talk about our budget? To make sure we're supporting our students and using those dollars thoughtfully?
Yes. I know, um, one thing that we cannot compromise is just being able to fund the site licenses for students to be able to apply themselves and take those industry-based certifications. And those have already been accounted for in our budget. I know that we also do fund like field lessons and experiences and we, we're able to scale that back a little bit. It just means that we have to be more intentional about connecting with our partners. We have schools that do a really, really great job of connecting with industry-based partners and sponsorships and grants to be able to fund those opportunities. I think centrally, we have to, um, better position ourselves to pivot and to support and do that legwork for schools and with schools to ensure that every school is accounted for and that, um, they don't fall, they don't have a shortcoming due to budget deficits.
All right. Good. Thank you. And I will ask, um, how we can help you guys? And also offer one, offer, um, that one of our roles is connecting with the community. And if we understand that need, we can help be your ambassadors, um, in partnership with that. But, but I would love to know what we can do to help kind of publicize what's going on, support what's going on.
I think you're working on something with us right now?
Yeah.
I can't remember what it is, but I know that Tara told me you're working on something now. So that's great.
Thank you.
Trustee Sapata?
Thank you for your presentation and, uh, I, I love the word alignment. Because that is, um, it's, it's, y'all are doing amazing, uh, work. And I know it's, sometimes, uh, there's different definitions of alignment too. So we gotta make sure we're all speaking the same language when it comes, when it trickles down to the campus. So I was curious about, um, can't see what. Oh, okay. The GPA programs, are they also included in this, I, I'm sorry, the graphs? I don't know if that's, is that, those students included in the data?
Are you speaking to Travis GPA and Navarro GPA?
Yeah.
I believe she is.
Currently they don't have any CTE classes, but we work with Travis GPA on programs. Like last year he offered, uh, patient care technician for his students. And I think he's looking in CCMA and CNA. So he's always looking for a program that he works with like Goodwill and us to kind of implement.
Right. Cause, so those programs, they do get certifications for those, right? So are those numbers included in the data of the students that get certified?
I do not think so because I don't have CTE course numbers.
Okay. Well, I, I think that could also be 2,000 something else, right?
We'll work on that too.
Yeah. And I think that's a, a success also. Um, so whatever we can do to include all our students that are getting those certifications. Also, um, you talked about collaborations. Can you talk more about what would be, what worked in the collaborations? What are you seeing? You, you'd like to see in the collaborations?
I'll start and then you can give some specificities, um, for this year and what we're, what we are planning on next year. So the collaboration really is across all the, the departments that support secondary outcomes. And so that collaboration means that they're going to take walks together. They're gonna observe classrooms together. They're going to come back and they're going to see what are the things that are working. They're gonna utilize our dashboard to see where our supports need to be better aligned for our campuses. And so we've started some of that work, but we haven't started it with all of, um, the departments that support secondary outcomes being together as a family, like in one. And so while they've done an amazing job of coming together, um, as a team, we want to make sure that this, this is the team. So that they, that all of their efforts, every, all the voices are at the table at the same time. And so we have started that work, um, this year. And Dr. Wilson can talk just a little bit about like the Friday collaborations that they have. And so what, what we're really looking at and we talk about collaboration is the day-to-day and how the teams come together to support the campuses.
Okay. All right. Cause, and I'm glad you clarified that because I was thinking the collaborations with the business people for the pathways. And so that's a huge piece. Um, that's one thing that I've, I, I think, you know, to get them to, to be a collaboration in addition to your collaboration. And, um, I did challenge them about paying stipends because a lot of our kids leave the pathways to go to work. So, uh, that's something just I want to share. Also, um, you talked about parent engagement. Is that new or is that something that's gonna be different that you've done before? Or what is that gonna look like?
So it's, it's not new, but it's definitely something again that we want to strengthen. So we want to make sure that when we send out communication, it's coming from one platform. We want to make sure that that communication is also the same in, in the way that we message it. And so really, um, ensuring that it's, it really centered. And so really ensuring that it's, it really centers around our vision. And we want to engage parents more so that they're able to not just receive the information, but then also explore what are the opportunities and the choices for their students. It's, a lot of the missed opportunities is really on the just understanding and the reflection of it. I'm still learning it as a parent myself about the different choices, you know, that for like my daughter's school and what they have to offer. And I have to admit that when I read through everything, it's a little overwhelming and I know how to navigate it, right? And so I end up asking her questions. She's like, well, you're supposed to know the answers to that. And I'm trying to advise her. So we really want to create like, it's, it's not, it's not new, but more of like improving what that engagement looks like to really include the reflection time. What are the tools? What are the pros and cons? Also helping parents really understand that if a child doesn't go through an entire pathway, it's okay. We want them to be interested in something, but also recognize all of the diff, and it's a lot, it's, it's vast. So the more that we can do to support and help our parents navigate through that. Because if you imagine going to a meeting, one meeting, and then you don't go to another meeting for two or three months. And that, you know, so we want to also have like a really strong feedback channel to where we're always collecting information from parents about, I'm confused about this. I want to know, you know, more about this. Something that will be new is really engaging more in events across our feeder patterns. So that when parents come in, they know not just about the elementaries, but also the middle and the high school and what programs feed into it. And then being able to explore and see live, like this is a product of. I think those are really great opportunities for our parents that we are starting this year.
Excellent, excellent. Is that something that PSSs are, will be getting training to do some of those kind of workshops for you guys?
We want them engaging and supporting us absolutely hand-in-hand.
Excellent. And I was glad to hear that you did surveys and assessments with students because that, that can really help guide what we, what areas of, of employment they're interested in, right? I had a lot of conversations with students and summer youth and a lot of them were like, oh, it was okay. I just did it for the money. It's like, okay. But we really want them to do something that they're going to love and enjoy. So I think it's important to always keep them in the conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Lugo.
Thank you all for the presentation and all the great information. A very big shout out to trustee Boswell. As you were asking questions, I was like, dang, she took another question. But all really great. I love the dialogue around this. So a couple of questions, so, so maybe I misheard, but I think there was a question around what the target, so what the why would be? Was that, was that asked? And can y'all remind me what was the answer? You know, on the scorecard, X to Y. Yeah, what was the why?
We said 55%.
Oh, 55, okay, because I thought it was like 50%. I was like, oh dang. Okay, thank you for that. Five-five. And then are there, are there any hints that you can drop around the ambassador? I think there was a conversation around being ambassadors or there's something being done so that the board can support the work? And I, and I heard, yes, there's something being done. And I'm like on the edge of my seat, like, and what is that? Yeah, when Lynn, I mean, when trustee Boswell, yeah, yeah.
It's the Austin PTA, right? You're doing something with the Arts and AV? No, you don't know.
We're both on the edge of our seats.
I will find that out.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then this is, I try to follow these question formats, I really do. But this is a genuine question and I think it's relevant to student outcomes. So out of curiosity, especially around the, you know, adjustments and improvements to family engagement. So I immediately thought about Career Day and do y'all, okay, maybe y'all, this is, okay, okay.
That was representative at some elementary schools last year for Career Fair. And we have a plan to expand that reach because we want to support that vertical alignment. So a part of the plan is for our CTE team to host Career Fairs at elementary schools and make sure that we are geographically represented across the districts. Another part of the plan is to visit PTA meetings for our elementary and middle school PTAs and to pique that interest as well. And then we have plans for eighth grade CTE alignment. What we've noticed is the disconnect when they transition from middle school to high school. So our counseling team has already started to present those presentations during our eighth grade transition meetings. So that, and during the camp, so that our middle schoolers are familiar with it. And they are looking at schools that they want to potentially attend based on those pathways that are offered and what piques their interest and curiosity.
Okay, great. And I, and I think what I'm understanding is, so like, is part of the vision to, say an elementary campus holds a Career Day and they've got community members, maybe parents coming in. And at that, around that same time or maybe on that same day, there's also information about like, hey, you know, Marcus and, what do people name their children now? I'm just going to use my kid, yeah. Like Apple, I don't know. Hey Emmy and Henry, you know, you want to be a chef or you want to, you really like to do X, Y, and Z. Did you know here at Austin, is that, is that kind of what y'all are thinking? Okay, okay.
So we've selected two schools, two elementary school, Pickle and Pillow. And so our goal is to have whatever feeder pattern, to bring those CTE teachers and their kids during the day and then showcase their different programs and pathways.
Yeah, that's so awesome. And there's another commentary, I'm probably going to get in trouble. This is another comment, commentary question, I don't know. I see a real connection between, you know, tell us your story, what do you want to be, CTE, right? Like all that, like how does Austin ISD help you get to like post-education life? So that's really exciting.
Yes, so what I'm looking at, our big overarching goal and the goal progress measure that we're looking at now and the goal project, progress measure for 3.2. Are there like any concerns of these becoming competing interests with each other? Or is that not a concern?
You mentioned 3.1 and 3.2?
3.2, so you know, students getting industry-based certifications. And then, so because that's sort of our career ready and then college ready. Or are they kind of like naturally complementary?
So when you think about college readiness, it's essentially our goal for every student. And it's not anything in which we should ever address in isolation because I think that's when we, we pigeonhole ourselves. And it normally is to the detriment of our students who are representative of our economically disadvantaged population or emerging bilinguals. So the college readiness should be just the standard baseline expectation for all students that are sitting in our high school, in all of our high schools. Now, is that the reality? No, it's not the reality, but that is what we are working towards. And college readiness, it just, if we can narrow and chisel it down to the most basic thing possible, we are looking at students taking, showing proficiency in math and reading. And that's something that we want students to graduate with, whether they go to college or not. So I don't look at it as a competing priority. I think the college readiness is that baseline standard. We have been very strategic in the past year or so at how we identify students for intervention. This is going to be actually in direct alignment with our MTSS focus as a district, district-wide. We've been very intentional with, with principals and campus leaders this summer on identifying students who are in need of targeted intervention, strategic intervention, aligning courses that support that work. But we also want to make sure that if we're aligning intervention courses that support that work, it doesn't pull them from a pathway or it doesn't make them miss the opportunity to be able to engage in other ways. So that's what we are looking to align. But I don't see any of those goals as competing against each other. They should actually be working in tandem towards proficiency for the student.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Go ahead trustee Lugo.
So a quick request, request of the administration. So I noticed on the trustee questions attachment, question four on page three, the response from the administration said, here is, here is a link to the AISD programs of study that shows the courses and the industry-based certifications for folks, for folks watching at home. They can't click on a link and it's not uploaded to Board Docs?
Because it's in PDF form, so what we can do is, we can, we can correct that, either with an amended table or make it an active PDF link, but we will take care of that. Works for you? Well, we'll, we'll look into it.
Trustee Hunter.
It is not a question, but I think it's important. And it's not CTE, but I want you to help me out for students. I, I think this is important. There is a student at LBJ, she graduated last year, but she had the phlebotomy she had gone through with ACC, right? And so I think this is the part, maybe we can't, we don't convey well to our kids. She doesn't want to be a phlebotomist. That is not her dream job. But she wants to be, I, I have it on here because I don't want to get it wrong. She wants to be in hematology oncology, right? Because she had actually suffered a blood disease. But she's going to go to college now and she can work for McDonald's for $7.25 an hour or she can go work in a hospital for 19. So the industry-based certifications not necessarily might be your dream job, but they can make the path to your dream job much smoother. And I think that's a piece we're missing. It's like we have, I, I do that with Ready Said Teach. We have very few African-American males. They're like, you know, you can't teach in high school unless you're a teacher. So you got to become a teacher first before you can become a coach. And it's just showing them, and they're like, oh, yeah, there's no coach school. We don't have coach school, they're teachers. And it's helping them understand the progression and whatever your dream is getting there. So I just, I know that was extra, but I think that's important.
Great point, thank you. I think we all liked that. All right, we're all nodding. Okay, so trustees, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you all. So now I think we have to vote on whether or not we will accept this monitoring report. So as a point of clarity, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for our students lines up, lines up with our vision for them. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, so having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sepata to accept the monitoring report. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The vote, motion passes unanimously by all those on the dice. Thank you. All right, so thank you all, really appreciate it. So next on the agenda is a presentation on the district's scorecard targets for 2025, 2029. So y'all thought we were done with the scorecard development? Guess what, we're not. We, we identified the goals and the constraints and the, all the progression, progress measures. And now our staff has been working really hard to discuss the actual numbers, the targets for the constraints, I believe. So Mr. Segura, would you please introduce this next slide?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Singh and Board of Trustees. I'd like to ask Dr. Reach, Chief Officer, Governor Relations and Board Services, and Dr. Jay Brown, Director, Director of Research Insight and Analytics, to take us through the presentation. And as you just mentioned, President Singh, this is just the portion in regards to constraints for, scorecard will come back within the presentation to talk about the goal.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Segura. So I'm excited to be here tonight to talk with you about some of our scorecard targets, something I really enjoy. I can see Dr. Coppins very excited already. So we've already got one of you on board, just eight more to go. So tonight, we really want to talk about the work that we did in defining scorecard success. Talk about the norms that we used when developing this. And then also discuss our next steps because there is still some work to do on our scorecard targets. And so first, I want to thank our school leadership team, our academics team, Heather Petrazini and the other staff who helped us build out the scorecard and work with Dr. Brown as we were trying to set targets. One thing that we knew was going to be really important for us is that while Dr. Brown and I probably could set targets, and if it was left to us, we probably would have and sent it over to you. But we recognize how important it is that we work with our schools team, work with our academics team to ensure that these are meaningful targets and that they are both achievable, but also, oh, and what's the word I'm looking for, Jay?
So I like to think a triangle of practice, rigor, and aspiration.
Thank you, yes. So going through that, including in these measures, of course, are our GPMs and our CPMs, our goal progress measures, and our constraint progress measures and the actual goals and actual constraints. So tonight, we are looking at constraint progress measures, and I want to talk about some norms for that first. So we wanted to focus on measuring details. So what was the purpose of the definition of the item? We wanted to look at previous year's data. And then we wanted to ensure that there was a root cause analysis on these individual indicators. So we knew what we were looking at for future years. Some of the details that we have on here is that our goal data will be presented for all of our students in student groups larger than 10. So we will always present data that shows not just the all students, but also all of our student groups that include special education and ECODIS, right? Yep. So the student demographic group, special education and ECODIS. And bilingual, thank you so much. Our constraint data is presented for targets, actual and student groups where it's meaningful. It may not always necessarily work out that way because of how the strengths are created. And then data will be presented in whole numbers unless having a decimal is going to give us additional context. So now I'd like to ask if Dr. Brown can take us through some of the slides on the constraints.
So we're going to go through constraints tonight. And as I said, we worked with kind of the experts that know this information best to go through past data, to go through what the research says, to go through if there are any indicators out there in federal or state or other states that can give us really good indicators of where we should be headed. So I like to think of that triangle of what are we doing in practice? Where should we hold ourselves and our students accountable in rigor? And we also want to hold that space for aspiration and creativity because we're not going to get there unless we have all three of those places in our stead. You'll see that we have targets for our constraints tonight. So we have marked in the language in red any changes, including those numbers that we filled out as well as any, if we've had to make any tweaks and we've made some small tweaks, mostly in kind of years or months where we've needed. You'll also see charts and data for the first time. So those that really like the numbers, congratulations, tonight's your night. You'll see in blue, that's going to be the overall, the total student group or the group to focus on. But as noted, there are a lot of areas in which we have student groups, those groups larger than 10, that we also will have data on. And that's only available where it's meaningful with the constraints. Next time when we're up, when we've got the goals, you'll see those student groups in almost every category. In fact, I think every category. So let's get to it. In constraint one is serving underserved students. That's the superintendent shall not allow campuses, campus practices that exclude disproportionately, disproportionately impact or fail to support historically underserved students. There's two CPMs in that area. And under the first one, chronic absenteeism, you'll notice that we have our data. That blue row is our row that we're going to pay attention to. And you'll see in red, those are our targets. You'll notice that we have two decimal points here. That's not in every category, but we've moved to where if it's easy to read and easy to understand, we'll present whole numbers. But we use decimal places when we need to. And in chronic absenteeism, we need two decimal places because those two decimal places make sense. They mean a lot of difference with students. So in this area, we're going to move in a decrease from 26.33% in August of 2024 to 17.58 in August of 2029. We've moved from August to August because we do have one campus that operates year-round. So we wanted to make sure that we're taking advantage of those full school year numbers. And this target also represents what is felt to be a 1.75% decrease from year to year. And this target also represents what is felt to be a one point seven-five percent decrease from year to year, where there's great implementation that's already in our structures. And a year-to-year decrease each time was what was felt could be handled and with that rigorous impact from year to year. Moving on, in special education evaluations, this one you guys have seen before. There are no changes in the, the language or the chart. This is one that we've been asked to keep until we finish up our goal in December of 2026. In our next constraint, caregiver engagement, we've read the language a lot, so I'm not going to read that one for the overall constraint language for you. But we have one C P M, and that's on caregiver engagement, and it has to do with campus improvement plans. Now, what you're going to notice is that we don't have a change in the language yet, and we have what I would call a blank chart. And that's because we're going to be in baseline data collection this year. So you'll see that twenty-four, twenty-five is baseline. So we've got our blue row and our red row both there, but they're not quite filled out. And that means that we'll be collecting our data, figuring out what our data looks like, and then coming back with targets once we have a better idea of what it looks like.
And I want to take a moment to talk about baseline since we're at our first one and mention that for all these items, we're still going to do our check-in, scorecard, check-in with the board and do our regular progress monitoring. So for these baselines, for this first year, we'll do it a little bit different because we won't be talking about how the data changed. We'll be talking about what we've been doing to get ready for this year. So for instance, for this one, we'd be sharing on, well, where are we at right now? What's our baseline? Because we'll have that data. And what have we been doing to work with the campuses? And then in future years, when we come back a year after that, we'll be talking about, well, here's how it changed and here's what we put in place to help support those campuses to move that forward.
Moving on to historically marginalized groups, we have three constraint progress measures to go through, and we've got a lot of information under that. The first is advanced academics, and this is one where you're going to see a large chart. We have student groups under it. You'll notice that there's a slight tweak in the lang, we've got red information in our language. Let's put it that way. We're moving from eighty-four percent to ninety-two percent. As a reminder, that this goal is tracking students who take one or more advanced course in their academic high school career. The, the purpose of this goal and what our group came together and really talked about is that we want to have ninety-five percent of our students overall taking in at least one advanced course in their high school career. And so you'll notice there's an all students, but that's not the blue line. And the overall goal in 2029 is to hit ninety-five percent. But the blue line is actually those specific student groups that we're looking at. And those are African-American students, emergent bilingual students, and students receiving special education services. Now, that line represents any student that hits one or more of those categories. And that's the line that we'll be focused on, and it's an aggregate of that group. So within that, we have kind of targets that fall anywhere from, I believe, seven to fifteen percent. The total or blue line is a, is in growth from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-eight, twenty-nine is ten percent growth. And that's the kind of triangle of growth that we want to see, and we can hit ten percent growth within the next five years. I did catch the advanced academics team, and they are worried about two of these lines, the American Indian group and the Pacific Islander. And this is where you'll hit that we've got very cautious and thoughtful groups. Those two groups actually have very small cell sizes. We've got some very, very small populations of students. And so in any given year, enrollment can really shift what the outcomes are. And so they may want to take a second look at what those are. You'll notice that they're very high to begin with. Our groups that are experiencing high achievement in these areas, you'll notice that they're already hitting either ninety-five, or we're hitting ninety-five. They're going up to ninety-seven percent. We don't want to hit a hundred percent because when you're already at the top of the norm, it's very hard to hit a hundred percent. But they may want to tweak. But in our student populations, and because this is our first one that we're going to see that we've got all the student groups, we look to see where can we hit an individual student group growth? And taking into consideration, where are we in our interventions? Where are we in our new programs? Where are we at our starting points and where can we focus growth? So some groups are hitting at above kind of ten percent growth. We want to really focus. Some groups are already doing really well, so we want to hit stasis. And we want achievement to kind of stay where it is or grow a little bit more. And some groups, we know it's going to be a really hard task. And so we know that there's going to be a grind and it will be harder to hit. And we're taking advantage of all the growth that we can get there, but we still want to hit growth. We don't want to leave any student group behind in our overall goal to hit ninety-five percent. It may take a little longer to get there, but that's where our experts sitting behind and in this building and beyond have really figured out how can we practically within our five years shoot for more students in advanced academics? As we head to dual-language instruction, this is another rubric walkthrough that we're going to be in baseline data collection. So you'll see updates as we collect our baseline, as we go into our dual-language classrooms. And there is a rubric that is, had pilot information, but we'll be going into all of our dual-language classrooms this next year to collect information. And our last C P M for constraint three is gifted and talented. Now, T E A has a representation index in which their goal target is point eight. Now, ideal proportionality would be one. That would be perfect representation. But T E A recommends point eight as a goal percentage. And so that's what this group was working off of. Goals were created to help provide alignment with what the operational definition of this is newly identified students each year. And so looking at where do we think we can grow each year towards the T E A goal of point eight? And really looking towards that concept of how can we reach proportionality? There are some groups that you'll notice already have proportionality or overrepresentation. Where that occurs, the goal is proportionality. Where we don't have, where we have disproportionality, the goal is to work towards point eight. And so you'll notice that in our African-American population, which is the target group in this constraint progress measure, we're working from point four-seven to point six-six. That is a forty percent increase over the next five years. That is also, a forty percent increase is also the economic disadvantage in the special education goal is to increase forty percent within the next four, five years. Apologies. Early learning is an additional walkthrough in which we'll be creating baseline data to give you updates. And just to let you know, we've got one more baseline. And it again, has to deal with a rubric collection. It's not a walkthrough, but it will be a data collection that happens with administrators and additional S E L designees that our S E L and C P and I group has worked with Castle. I never remember whether I should say Casel or Castle. I'm East Texas, so I say the hard A. To really figure out where's our baseline and where are campuses growing in their S E L priorities as well as their growth. Our last two is five point two and five point three have to do with restorative practices and how we deal with discipline with our students. As a note, we moved from looking at disciplinary action to disparity rates. And the reason for that is so we could take into account what is our discipline actions in relation to the student population or the proportion of that student population. So you'll note here, this is another one where we've got decimal places because decimal places matter in this area. So we slightly modified that language so we could look at what's the proportion of discipline as a kind of representation of the student population. For both five point two and five point three, the goal is to decrease by one point each year. We did modify the language up top to keep in kind of parallel structure with how all the other C P Ms and G P Ms were written, for those that really like grammar out there. And you'll notice that for the African-American population, it's moving from eleven point three-five in twenty-three, twenty-four to seven in 2029. For our special ed population, it's at a starting point of sixteen point oh-three with a goal to move to eleven in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. That takes us to our close for the night with lots of space for questions.
So we are certainly interested in hearing the questions and the thoughts on the constraints. But I want to briefly speak about our goal targets before we move on. So we want to ensure again that we're working with our teams and that we're bringing forward really meaningful goals, I'm sorry, targets for all of our goals. And we just needed some more time to complete that. So that's why what was uploaded when we shared this with trustees the ten days ago was just the constraints. But we are still working today on those goals. And we believe that we have two options that we want to bring forward to trustees. And that is that we would be prepared to come back in September and talk through goals. Or we can share out the goals as soon as they're ready, which is going to be next week. We're still looking at? Yeah, which will be next week with trustees. We can upload it to our website as a draft so that it's available to the public. And if needed, we can discuss it at our meeting the twenty-second to still vote on the twenty-second this month. So the two options would be that we'll share it publicly, send it out to trustees and still vote on the twenty-second. Or we would come back in the September info session, talk about the goal targets, and then vote at the September voting meeting.
Trustees, what do y'all think?
I would really love to have the targets chosen in August if we can, if we feel like we can adequately share it with the community. And I wonder if one option would be to add that as an informational item at our meeting on the fifteenth, just to brief, to share it publicly then if it might be ready in addition to posting it. And that way, we've, we've, it hasn't been the information session, but at least we've had the opportunity to preview it.
Sure.
Like our community expects.
And so that would, yeah, let me discuss that with the team also and if there's?
I agree. Good. Yeah. I think that'd be great. Okay. So it seems like we'll vote on it this month if everything is in order.
Excellent. Well, then we'd like to turn it back over to any questions or thoughts on the current constraints.
Trustees, any questions? Did you have a question? Okay. I do have a question. It was related to the family engagement. If you don't mind pulling, I know this year will be a baseline. I was kind of curious to know exactly how you would go about measuring that.
It's a really good question. So our campuses do create a campus improvement plan. And looking within that, that, so the goal around this specific C P M is the number of campus that develop and meet their goal in the campus improvement plan based on a dual-capacity framework. So it's not just developing a goal, but developing a goal based on a dual-capacity framework. So we've had a couple of talks about both developing the campus improvement plan with the family engagement and what that means to also have the dual-capacity framework. So the, in previous years, the, the campus improvement plans have had various areas that have had requirements and then various areas that have kind of, choose your own adventures, if you will. Before I try and make perfect language for you. The campus improvement plan will have the kind of caregiver engagement as a required area in which they're all going to be putting in what they're doing with their caregivers. The, the portion of the dual-capacity framework is something to build out. And we're actually going to work with one of the evaluators on my team that works with several different programs that actively use the dual-capacity framework to help build out what it would mean to have data collection around dual-capacity framework. How our principals know whether they're building a plan that utilizes the dual-capacity framework to help figure out what that additional step in this specific C P M means.
Okay.
And I would just want to add that in our last week's, it may have been two weeks ago, but I think it was last week's leadership email that goes out to all of our campus leaders, I did provide an update on this item specifically, also letting them know that the scorecard was approved. But really highlighting this one so that our campuses were aware of what we were looking at, providing them the link to the dual-capacity framework so that they had that. Although I'm willing to bet that many of our campuses are already using a lot of it. So that they're ready for that. And then when that, when our staff member who helps support the C I Ps starts their training, it'll be built into that training. So we will be supporting our campuses with helping aligning goals to this and then doing regular check-ins with them to see how that's going.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate that. I'm excited about that and would be really curious to know if, like, because the term dual-capacity framework, like, people don't really know exactly what that means. How is that different from just what we already do? Like, how's that different from having just a P T A? Or, you know, so I would, at some point when y'all are ready, I think it would be really helpful to just kind of market that out in the community a little bit because that is something special that we do in A I S D. Definitely goes above and beyond just your run-of-the-mill vanilla family engagement, so. I feel like Secretary Boswell has something to add to this now. I know it's your favorite topic.
I think just, I do have a question related to that one on slide eleven. And a comment that we have a video, Dr. Karen Map spoke at a conference for Austin I S D during the pandemic. But there's a video in our bank somewhere that was a fantastic talk. So that is one, something that we might be able to share with our community just to give people a sense of what that is. And it's also in our board adopted policy and has been for quite a while. So I'm excited to see that. Yes. Thank you, President Singh. I do have a question on that slide. I know we had talked about campus improvement plans and targeted improvement plans and their state requirements for those targeted improvement plans. When we say campus improvement plan, does that include every campus or only the campuses that don't have a targeted improvement plan? Because I know those fill that, that requirement.
It includes all campuses.
All campuses. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then my other question, and I, I had to step out for a minute, so you may have answered this and don't feel like you need to answer it again, is, you know, I know our last scorecard, the numbers looked very different. Our targets looked very different. And, and I think there wasn't the same degree of thoughtfulness that kind of went into them that, you know, you've, you've obviously done a lot of data work and a lot of philosophy work kind of thinking about this. Can you just kind of share why you think this is better than, than those kind of big rounds, giant numbers we had before, even though we, we want our students to kind of get to all the, you know?
I think the concept of aspirations are great, but having goals that we can set our goals, pace those goals and meet those goals, setting those goals as adults and then working towards them is an excellent thing for us to do, but also for us to show our kids that we do them as well. And so being thoughtful about them and showing that we work really hard to think about what our goals are, not only the big goals, those five years' goals, but also those yearly goals, is an excellent practice at any age and at any stance. And I think that we've taken a really hard look at what we want to do in our scorecard. We, we really kind of retooled and I was listening to the I B C and Kudos guys. They did a great job. And they were first up with a really different piece of language and really the first shot at a leading indicator so they can really have that first look at what do we need to change in order to get those I B Cs? And then thinking really hard, because they've already built their targets, by the way. They, they're A-plus in building their targets. And really thinking, what is it that we want of our students overall, long-term? And then how do we build a plan in numbers? And then how do we build a plan in action to get there? And then how do we match that up? And that's in purpose. That's what this scorecard is supposed to do. And it's nice from a data nerd perspective to see that happen. And I think that that really happens nicely in these overalls, but also in where we can see that in those student groups. And it, it looks messy as all get out because it's not, you know, it's not whole numbers and it's not, we're going to increase by fives every year, but it's meaningful. And I think when it's meaningful and you can sit down with a group and you can sit down with a campus and say, we thought really hard and we took into consideration, what is our population of students? What is our enrollment? What is our past achievement? And what's coming down, what's coming down in implementation and curriculum? And how does that all come together to match where we want to head? And how does that all come together to match where we want to head? I think that that puts everybody kind of into the conversation and working towards the same goals.
Great, thank you for that, Dr. Brown. I really appreciate the how, you know, not what we're getting to, but how we're getting there. I think that's a really important part of the conversation. And thank you for the data nerdiness. It's, it's getting us to a good place, so I appreciate it.
Trustee Kaufman.
I also appreciate the thoughtfulness going into this. I am curious about the incremental, it seems that they're all kind of incremental, steady growth, take seven divided by four and then go 1.75 per year, kind of a linear model for the growth targets. I see it's a little different. I also heard you say when you hit the top that it makes it, you know, you're going to level out your curve sum. I'm curious about the selection of the linear models and is that going to be the standard way or am I missing it somewhere else?
Not exactly. So in some of those in which implementation has already, there's a lot of implementation and plans in place, groups have decided that we do think that we can hit a pretty solid change from year to year. But there are a lot of groups that really took and said, this is where we want to hit in 2029. And we know we have a lot of work to do. So you'll see in the first year that the smallest amount of change occurs because implementation takes time. You don't see success in the first year. You, you might see a little bit of change. You're probably going to see the implementation changes from year two to three, year three to four. So it's not, it's not a same every year. It's more of a kind of, sometimes it's curvilinear, sometimes it's, you know, a larger jump towards the end. But groups were really thoughtful, not just about where they wanted to end in 2029, but also where they thought they were going to be from year to year. Not only in the overall, but sometimes thinking about specific student groups and where they were with different priorities and different implementation of kind of policies that were coming through.
So I saw that a little bit in the GT table, but I don't really see it elsewhere. So where else can you point me to?
You're going to see it a lot because there's, there's not a whole lot that have a lot of the student breakdowns. You're going to see it a lot more when the goals come out.
Okay.
And apologies because there's, there's still a lot of polishing and people that want to sleep on goals before they, they get the final copy to you.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate that, especially when we get to the goal targets, just because I think we traditionally had that assumption that every year we're going to do a little bit. And yet the whole idea of the, yes, I agree that there's, that what I've been dreaming of is that we look at the goals like in terms of how they'll actually be implemented. So some where you have to invest a lot of capacity at the beginning and then it's going to explode later because of all the investment. And sometimes you're going to get that low-hanging fruit early. It's easy to get this group, but then when you get past the easy-to-reach group, now you have the more challenging group to level out. So I'm hoping that you'll help us step through, step us through an understanding of those different approaches and, and then help us see the implementation data so that when we see level results at the beginning, that we understand that there's a lot of implementation happening that will then, we're expecting this to go up and not just a, it takes time, wait and see. So I appreciate that we're approaching it that way. I do also want to ask, what's, what's different about the dual language approach this time? Because I'm looking at, you know, the extraordinarily limited, the extraordinarily narrow piece that we take out of dual language, which is just the language of instruction. Is the classroom following the language allocation model for the program? Are they teaching in Spanish and English in a dual language program? Are they teaching in Vietnamese? Because we've historically had bilingual programs that are in one language. And so it's like the lowest, the easiest to measure of all the indicators is, is the teacher teaching in Spanish during Spanish time and are they teaching in English during English time? And the department had a tool for that that was piloted and ready to go pre-COVID. It was interrupted during COVID. It was, you know, but it was there. It was a tool, it was piloted, it was ready to roll. We talked about looking at this data two years ago. And then it was like, well, we're piloting a new tool. And then they're like, well, where's the data? And we'll, we'll have some data at the end of this year because we're piloting a new tool. And now we're looking at baseline data and there is no baseline data. And we're piloting a tool to give us baseline data at another 12 months from now. So I'm really trying to have, to celebrate the fact for the first time in, as far as I'm aware, history, we have goals that are specifically targeted towards implementation of a program that's shown by research to be the most effective for a particular group of students. And that's tremendous that we have that in our goals now. But I'm really trying to temper that enthusiasm with the past in terms of how we keep kicking this can down the road. And so I'm just, I really would just like to have a better understanding of what's different this time, that this tiny little easy-to-measure piece is going to actually be measured and reported and we're going to see it grow.
So trustee Kaufman, I can probably begin to answer this. I think we probably need to invite some others up here to, to follow up. And so I am aware of the tool that was created before the pandemic and it was, I think, three points from what I recall that were collected and piloted, I guess collected and they were all, it's all observation. And then, then work began with the MEAC and the tool was refined. And then there was a pilot period. And I agree with you, it didn't quite get all the way through implementation. And so, you know, one of the things that, that we're trying to do is to take the most current iteration of that tool, make sure it's the appropriate tool moving forward and then incorporate it into the work that all of our teams are doing across our campuses. I guess to your question about the baseline year, right, that would have required that the tool would have been implemented with fidelity in 20, this last school year in order to have that. And, and I can't say that we were able to, to quite get there. I probably would want to ask, I don't know if, I don't want to necessarily bring Dr. Maxwell up to speak to it, but I think it would help maybe provide some clarity as to why that baseline year isn't developed in a way that you might expect. Because I remember having this conversation back in spring of 2023. So Dr. Maxwell, was that, did you kind of catch all that?
I did.
Okay.
As soon as we were talking about dual language, I parked up. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Segura. As I understand it, I wasn't here for all of the iterations, but last year, so I've seen the, the walkthrough tool in its entirety, which is pretty extensive. Last year, the area of focus for the walkthrough tool, though, was environmental. And so it all looked at the environmental pieces that would take place in the classroom, gave feedback to teachers, gave, and the, the people doing the observations, including the Met team, but also administrators themselves, focused on those pieces, really understanding a lot of what those pieces meant. And then gave feedback to teachers and feedback to campus leaders based on what they saw in the classrooms. There were walkthroughs in the fall, another set of walkthroughs in the spring. And I believe that information is going to be part of the annual multilingual report that will be coming to the board soon. So that is what that data focused on. So this is actually an expansion. It's the same walkthrough tool, but this is an expansion of the use of it. And although the language of instruction seems like an easy target and it's, it's, there's clarity in collecting that data. In execution, as you well know, it's very difficult to do with fidelity. So when you have a group of students in front of you, that's primary language is one thing and your target language is in the secondary language, there's a tendency to revert back to the primary language because you're trying to make sure that students have understanding and comprehension rather than staying in the target language. And so the, the professional learning is focused on that this year. And it was really one of the primary reasons for a very heavy rewrite of the dual language curriculum, not changes in the resources necessarily, but how we were using them so that we could be specific about that target ling, target language with very specific pieces of it, make sure that we were focusing on the things that transfer, so we make those connections across linguistic connections, but also being very explicit on the things that don't transfer so that those are taught very explicitly in, in a specific language. So watching that happen, and I noticed in observations of classrooms a lot this last year, many times, even though there was an intended language that was expressed, the, and it maybe was in sort of a, a, not as obvious version in the curriculum, now it's much more clear in the curriculum and the expectation is, is much, I think, just, it just has a lot more clarity around it for teachers and for administrators.
And so I appreciate the, the recognition that the implementation of the language of instruction is challenging because of, for a number of reasons. The part I still don't understand is, you know, the, the act of observing the language of instruction is simple. And so this is where I'm just wondering, like, it just, I think it is the right measure for the scorecard because it is one of, you know, it is one of the key indicators of whether the program is being implemented because, and, and it requires, right, you can't just teach in the other language. You have to provide the scaffolds and the supports and the curriculum and, and everything and align the expectations from the variety of people who come into your room every day to make sure everyone understands and you're on the same page. So there's a lot of pieces that go into making it work. But just getting a number in our district where we can say, yes, we're a dual language district and we've been for 12 years, and yet we have X percent of our classrooms are actually following the language allocation model. And so we know that this is the work we have yet to do. Or what our parents have been clamoring for, for, for years now is help us understand where it's being implemented well. Let us know, is this school being, you know, this school that calls itself dual language, is it implementing dual language? Because we're inviting parents to come to schools, we're recruiting parents to come to schools, we're engaging families. And they come back to AISD because we have dual language. And then we find, they find themselves in classrooms in schools where their kid is not getting language into instruction, I mean, instruction in two languages.
Right.
So they're like transparency, like, show us, tell us the truth. And so this is the piece where I think this data can really drive improvement in this area, but more importantly, it's going to bring us more integrity in our word about what programs we're implementing.
Agreed.
And so I just, I, I, I'm again, excited that this is an agreed-upon measure. Skeptical about our capacity as a district to get over that hump to where we actually are honest and about the implementation of our programs. And not honest, let me take that back, that we are clear and transparent in where the implementation of our programs are and that we get this data this year. So I'm excited, but I'm excited that we're going to have this data this year. I'm glad that it's different now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees have questions on any of this? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Willie Chu.
All right, so my first question is about CPM 3.3. And how does increasing the number of identified, so what, one, would it be possible to increase the representation index of African-American students without, without increasing the number of African-American students by decreasing the number of students in other categories?
I suppose that it could be possible that if the number of African-American students enrolled in the district went down, but all the students who were already in gifted and talented were not any of the ones who left, it would increase the ratio. But just the number of African-American students going down would not decrease, would not increase it, would it?
It's a representation index of the proportion of students in GTE compared to the number of students of a particular student population enrolled total. So it's, it's not necessarily dependent, or it, it flexes with enrollment each year is a good way to think about it.
Can you give us the formula for that index?
So in the, in the 620 board docs, it's there, but we can also give it to you again from TEA.
Like, can you, when you pull it up, can you just, because I guess my, my question would, is, so, so say during, you know, universal screening that, that will happen because of the grant we've received. If, like, other student, if the number of students in other student groups were, if it were decreased in receiving gifted services, would that be a way to increase the representation index of another group?
No. So one, it's based on the, the representation of students each year. So this is the, this number of students we're putting into GT each year. But it's also based on the proportion, it's, it's based on the enrollment of each student group, that the number of students placed into GT, and then it's a ratio of each. And so it's not dependent on, say, we, we put this many African-American students into GT, but put this many white students into GT. It's, those numbers aren't dependent on each other.
Like, we're not putting them, we're identifying them as gifted.
Yes, apologies.
And what, so if we're looking at a constraint to not have academic disparities, what does identifying students as gifted, what does that do for them in this district? What benefits does that give them in this district, having a gifted identification?
There is a number of research-based success outcomes identified with GT. There are a number of services identified with GT. We also have a large federal grant that's increasing our GT resources, staffing resources and community-based resources that are provided to our gifted and talented students.
And like, what are those resources and what will they be in this district?
I, I would better, I, I would better send that to our area for gifted and talented. And I think that you probably also have a board update for that. Twice a year on GT? I know that I, I, my team works on the, the Javits evaluation and so I know more than the regular bunny, per se, but I would not want to be the expert talking on GT.
Well, I guess, I guess trustee Willie Chu, would it be helpful, so I think it's a complement of two things. I think there, there are things that we're just not going to be able to provide until we give you like all of it.
Okay.
But if there's, I'm kind of baiting on how, how deep to take this conversation. I'm not sure if Patty or if Dr. Maxwell would want to speak to it, but I, I think, oh, is Dr. Seb back here? She's way in the back. Yeah, we, let's, I would say, come over here to Dr. Seb. Let's have, I think a brief conversation, but I think there's going to be resources that we're going to have to provide to supplement the conversation. Trustee Willie Chu.
Press the button.
Thank you. I'm GT. Now, thank you so much for this question. I think it's a really important conversation to have. One of the things about the GT representation index, as Jay was trying to explain, she did very well, the GT representation index is the percentage of students identified as GT should match the percentage overall in the district. So for example, black students are about 6% of our district population. So 6% of the students we identify as black each year, or I'm sorry, as GT each year should be black. That is what the representation index in 3.3 is showing, is that we are not currently doing a good job of representing or identifying students that matches our district population. This constraint is based on TEA's guidance, on what the TEA state plan says, that the GT population should reflect the district population. So that aside, I think your other question about what does it mean to be identified as GT and what do students get as that? So one of the things I would, we are trying to make sure we explain is that gifted and talented is like an academic service. So just like you would say that this is an indicator for students having academic needs. They might need different differentiation, they may have different social emotional need, they may be neurodivergent. There's a lot of other aspects. There's not necessarily something that they're getting, like tangible, but it's the way they are treated and hopefully served better in the classroom. but it's the way they are treated and hopefully served better in the classroom by the teachers knowing this information about them. The other thing to keep in mind is that our current GT service model at the elementary level is cluster grouping, which means that students are clustered with a teacher who has GT training. And so right now, as you can see, we are not currently representative of our GT population. So we are sort of working to make sure that we are doing a better job to identify students before we try to make any significant changes to our model. So right now, we don't have the right students identified yet. I don't know if that answers your question.
I, I would say some, so some of it is, we, so that's the basic state requirement, is to cluster them and have training for the teacher.
So the state requirement requires the TEA service plan, so it's the TEA State Plan for the Education of Gifted and Talented Students, which is what guides our GT programming. It outlines that we need to have a service model. We have adopted the service model of cluster grouping at elementary. And at the secondary level, our service model is courses, advanced courses in the area of their identification. That is what is required. It is required to have a service model. It doesn't, TEA does not say what the service model has to be. TEA does say that any teacher providing GT services has to complete training. It is part of, the service plan has different areas, one of which is professional development, one of which is service design. So the teachers that are providing, or are that cluster at the elementary, or the advanced courses, they are the teachers that are required to take training. One of the things, just while I have an open mic to explain about this. TEA is a requirement for the GT foundations. Part of that training includes how to find or identify students and what to look like. However, according to TEA, only teachers that already have GT students or serve GT students have to take that training. So part of what we are doing with the Javits grant is trying to ensure that more teachers are aware of these things beyond just the teachers who serve GT. So we've collaborated with special ed, MTSS, elementary and secondary, to try to integrate those trainings and talk about twice-exceptional students, special education students that may also be identified as GT, because we do need to do a better job of finding the students that are there, that sometimes their disabilities might be masking their giftedness.
The nice thing about this is that with a constraint measure, you get more of her.
I don't know. You can decide later if that's a good thing or not.
That's a, that's a good thing. So I, I don't see students who have 504 plans, and those would be 2E students. So I see special education, but is that something we might want to, but is being considered to add in there to make sure we're?
In our, within our own department, we usually also look at the students with dyslexia and 504 students. I think this is just the general, we're not doing different student groups than all the other constraints, if that makes sense. If you would like that added in, if there's other student groups, but the 504 student group is not part of the other constraint tables. Correct?
It is not a group that we've been looking at within our student, within our student groups breakdowns.
But I would say, like, for twice-exceptional students, that seems especially.
Those, those are part of the special education students. So students is.
Well, some students with disabilities qualify for 504 plans and not for special education services.
I will also say that our 504 representation index or our dyslexia intervention index, I can't remember. One of those is actually very well-represented. So the percentage of students, I think, I think it's with dyslexia. So the percentage of students in dyslexia in the district is very similar to the percentage of GT students in the district. But one, one of the other pieces about that is providing training for our campuses on what to look for, how the screening process works. And with the Javits grant, we are able to do a lot more of that this year. So we are even having more in-person trainings for our advocates to make sure that we are building capacity and their ability to support campuses and teachers on how to look for students for referrals. So we're not always waiting or dependent on a parent or a teacher. We're trying to make sure that more people are looking.
Okay. And then is this, does this include talent explore students?
This does not include talent explore students.
But I, so I do think from what you're, like, saying with calculating that number, if other student groups that were greater, decrease their representation, it would in.
It's not in comparison to each other. It's in comparison to the district.
But it's compared to the total, but we, we can look, we can look at the math later.
I mean, if our, our GT, it, it is more that if our, if our Asian population grows significantly, then we would want to see our GT population increase to match that increase. Does it? So they are, it is an index, so it does vary year to year, and the groups do kind of influence each other. But not to, it, we also are very clear that it's not a quota. There's not a magic number. There is not a number. It's a representation, that it should be thinking about the proportion of GT students should be the same proportion as the, in the district.
Thank you.
Yes, are you, did you have anything else? Okay, yes, quick follow.
Why is, you help us understand why the representation index is a better measure than saying we would, our target for each student group is to have 8% of the students identified as gifted and talented, and then look to increasing to the 8%? It seems like that would be a more transparent and understandable target.
It, it could be. I know that, that what is, is what it has been in the past. TEA says that it should be the proportion of the GT population should match the proportion of the district. So it is trying to be more in alignment with what the TEA state plan says. We are also happy to provide that information. I want to say, off the top of my head, about 9% of black students, but it's also like 22% of white students, if we, so there's still disparities between those two.
To clarify further, so the, this measure is indifferent to how many, what percentage of your overall population is represented, as long as it's not disproportionate? Because I understand the TEA representative, the representation index, you can meet that target, this is going back to where you began. If you have 2% of your students identified as gifted and talented, you can meet the representation index as long as most of your groups are around that 2%. Or you could have 50% of your kids identified, as long as it's 50% of every group. Whereas when you set the numerical target and say, we want every group to be 8%, you're setting.
Alternatively, and take, for example, our, our special education population has risen in recent years. And if we set, if we set standard targets, we would not be taking into account proportionality of our student group growth. And so by setting, by setting an index, we're able to take the flux of enrollment of any one student group and look at proportionality. Are we meeting what our student group looks like? And are we meeting those standards? Are there different ways to look at it? Yes.
But is it accurate?
Allows us to take, in any given year, are we, are we meeting what our student group looks like at the very bare minimum?
But is it accurate to say that you could have, like, I think this goes back to what Catherine, I think, you could have the number of students GT identified going down over time, but the index going up? Because you don't have more African-American students identified, you have fewer white students identified, so now the index is, right?
But they're not the same. So the black index and the white index don't, those are two separate ident, like, calculations.
Okay, well, I just, I would say that we would just need a lot of clarity and education on what this goal looks like. Because it's, to me, it's similar to, like, the TEA measures where it's hard for parents to decipher what that means, because it doesn't match up to anything.
Correct.
Like, that's clear and easy to see. So hopefully we can, if we stick with this measure, we can have a real solid user, user's guide. Thank you.
Trustee Willie Chu.
On CPM 4.1, what are, so is there, has the formal observation portion of the instrumental, instructional practices changed for PPFT this year?
Good evening, trustee. I want to make sure I understood your question. Has, has the, has the rubric itself changed?
Yes.
The rubric has not. We've revamped the rubric, rubric over time. A couple of years ago, we did a revamp on it. But we have not, we are aligning to the walkthrough tools to the instructional tool itself of PPFT to make sure that our look-for's are, are clear and, and it is aligned to the tool itself. But PPFT rubric has not changed.
So what developmentally instructional practices is it aligned to? So I'm looking at CPM 4.1.
We can, we're going to do our crosswalk, and we can certainly provide that information to you. I don't have it with me, in front of me at the moment, but we can certainly provide that to the trustees, with the full crosswalk of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I understand. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right. I think that was, and so we will stay tuned then for the other part of all this with our goal, progress, measure, targets.
That's right.
Later this month, right? Okay, great. All right, so I think now, okay, so we will now move on to our information reports and updates. So superintendent, would you please introduce the next item?
Absolutely. Sorry.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Reeve. Thank you, Dr. Jay Brown. So agenda item 5.1, preparing for a new school year. Can't believe it. So it's, summer went by real fast, y'all.
It did.
Real fast. I feel like we were just, it's not over yet, but it's getting close. So we're about to kick off the 24-25 school year, and I want to share a brief update with you all about the great things that are happening in Austin ISD to get ready for the return of our amazing students. And so our theme this year is, this is our story. And we know what an incredible story our staff and students can tell about Austin ISD. You know, we've, I'm sure some of y'all have seen the murals around town, and we've often talked about, you know, who we are as an organization. You know, we have been around for, for many generations. You know, 81% of the students in Austin are served by Austin ISD. We talk about the fact that just about everybody you run into in the city is connected to Austin ISD in some way, but we don't tell our story. And so we're really wanting to, to create the opportunity for our families and our staff to feel comfortable telling their story. And, and that's kind of how we started our Leadership Institute, which actually took place on July 18th. And it was an incredible event. Our Office of Talent Strategy went all out, and it looked just like the Moody Theater, if you had, oh, sorry. Moody Theater at Austin High. We had a keynote from Kendra Hall, an amazing storyteller, and our campus admin teams engaged in several days of professional learning. And as you can see, Big Red, our apple, even made an appearance. Also, want to express sincere appreciation for our trustees that, that made it out. Trustee Gonzalez, thank you for being there. Trustee Hunter, President Singh. I can tell you that just engaging with our staff means the world, and it made all the difference. And so just a great way to, to kick off the year. Another exciting thing that's happening this summer is the continuation of the 2022 BOND program. We've gotten, got ODOM in the final stages, and Harrison Langford Elementarys are under construction and are moving into their swing spaces. Certainly want to acknowledge that, you know, swing space transitions can be difficult. We're trying to, to navigate the last couple of weeks, and, and I just want to express my appreciation for our staff at our campuses and, and just know that, you know, I, I hope that they understand that we're doing everything we can to ensure that they move in in a safe way. And with the limited time we have over the summertime, these last couple of weeks can be challenging. It's always the case. And so just want to let them know that we're doing what we can to make sure everybody gets into their schools safely and start the new school year together. It's a lot of coordination by lots of people, and we can't wait to see some of these schools come online. You can see on the bottom right-hand corner, a rendering of the future Langford Elementary. You can see a current picture of the ODOM entry modernization update. We had the Harris Elementary School groundbreaking not too long ago. You know, before too long, the entire system will be in one form or another in construction. The $2.44 billion, again, touches every school in some way. And many, many schools are going to be going through this transition all around the same time. So just want to kind of share, you know, just my appreciation to all the folks working on this. And please just know that, you know, these types of things can be challenging. So please provide grace and patience as we work together through this as a community. On Monday, August 5th, we welcomed approximately 700 new teachers to Austin ISD at the PAC. It was, it was an incredible event. It was put on by our Office of Talent Strategy, and we are so proud to welcome all of our new teachers and counselors and librarians. I do want to point out that our Two Teachers of the Year did an amazing, amazing job. Daniel Cameron and Bowla from Harris, Daniel Cameron from LBJ. I mean, they, they set the tone. They were real. They shared from the heart. I was so proud of just what they shared with our incoming educators. It was, it was really powerful. Also, really proud of just the continued collaboration and coordination with Education Austin and, and our other partners. It was also really cool to see the number of educators who were new to the profession, and it is a profession, don't forget. We take that very seriously, but also those that were coming back into the profession. We had them raise their hands, and it was just awesome to see, you know, them kind of coming back into Austin ISD and us welcoming them home. And so as we move on, there's a lot of things happening as we prepare for the school year. I know I've seen lots of buses moving about. I'm sure many of y'all have as well. Have y'all seen a bus this week? I mean, schools, y'all seen some buses? You saw three this morning? Okay. That's good. You, you should have, you should have. Our bus drivers are outriding the routes and getting ready to pick up students for the first day of school. And our warehouse team is out delivering food to our schools to feed our amazing students. I do want to briefly read a, a text, and this is from Chris Hapaziza Day, who is our Executive Director of Transportation. He's been with Austin ISD for well over 20 years. And he sent me a text around 5:55 PM. He goes, just wanted to give you all some, some good news. I don't often share these sorts of things, but all routes are covered. We have extra drivers and a few still in training. That has never happened in his 20 years in Austin ISD and 14 years in transit. So a lot of this is just a continuation of all the work that the board has done, the administration's done. Certainly the compensation adjustments we've been able to make over the last couple of years. You can really see the compounding effect when these things come together. So to hear that from him was pretty incredible, especially after 20 years. So thank you, Chris. We're all there with you, and great job. Thank you, bus drivers. Absolutely, absolutely. And as you can see, our story is one of many, many hands and minds pulling together as we move forward and getting ready for our students. We have done a tremendous amount in hiring. I definitely want to, again, shout out Brandy Hoseck, our Chief of Talent Strategy. We have 96% of teaching positions filled, y'all. This is, like, huge. This is way ahead of where we've been in the past. It's an incredible number. It's back to about 2015 kind of timeframe. So very proud of it. I know a lot of work has gone into it. We made some adjustments last year, made some adjustments this year. And, you know, just really proud of, of where we are as we move into the start of the school year. We did talk about enrollment and registration. Certainly recognize that there have been challenges along the way. But very proud of the team, working with our school registrars and our principals and our community members. Our PSSs are out, you know, walking, going door-to-door at many of our high schools, just making sure we connect with our families. And so, yes, we are on track to match 23-24 enrollment, which is, which is great. I mean, you know, we talk about the fact that many school districts, many urban school districts have continued to see declines. This whole, if this holds, will be three years of, of steady enrollment. And I'm still crossing my fingers for some, some growth, but we'll, we'll wait to see that come. So very excited, a lot of work, and we are all very proud of, of where we are. And we're very excited to welcome all of our students back into Austin ISD and all of our staff back. We're excited to have a tremendous, incredible year and see everybody back on August 20th, which is still a little ways away, but not too far, and I'm looking forward to it. So thank you. And that concludes my, my agenda item, President Singh, 5.1.
Thank you. Appreciate that. 96%. That's pretty amazing. And so, so appreciative of Ms. Hoseck and your team for, for making that happen.
There's one more number, but I can't, Brandy won't let me share it until we're past September 1, which is the retention rate or trick rate.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll. So we'll stay tuned.
But you can't share that our retention rate for our Title I and non-Titel I schools.
Correct. Is below 1% difference, which is the first time it's been like that in a very, very, very long time ever.
That's huge.
So that's also a big milestone as well. So we'll have that information and we'll share it at the next available board meeting. Maybe not the 15th, but one soon thereafter.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right, so the next item is a Texas Education Agency Special Education Agreed Order Update. So as part of the agreed order, this counts as part of our discussion on student outcomes and special education. So we have scheduled, whoops, an hour for this discussion. I don't know if we'll need a full hour, but, so I will hand it off to you, Superintendent.
Absolutely. So thank you. I'd like to welcome Dr. Jacob Reech, Chief Officer, Government Relations and Board Service. Mr. Oscar Rodriguez, Chief Technology Officer. And to take us through the update and also want to welcome Lisa Shockley, one of our two monitors, who's been working collaboratively with us over the last year. I mean, it's been, it's been a little while now and so very much appreciate all the work that we've been able to do together. And so with that, I'll hand it over to the team and we'll continue on.
Thank you so much, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Segura. So a lot has been going on in the summer and since we last met. And so to give you an overall update on this order, I've shared before that we have 99 tasks to complete. And we have now increased up to 58. And one very exciting thing that I previewed with you on June, but now is official, is that our Priority One, we have closed all of our open corrective action plans. And that that priority is complete. So we're very excited about that. I also want to briefly touch on Priority Two and just share that we are continuing the training and preparing our campuses for MTSS for this upcoming semester. A lot, a lot of training and work has gone on these last few weeks, led by our special education team, working with our professional development team and our school leadership to ensure that our tier and MTSS training was completed for all of our staff and that the work on our MTSS problem-solving teams was put into place and trained with all of our campus leaders and ensuring that all of our administrators have the MTSS progress monitoring and walkthrough, training ready to go for this first day of school. We still have a lot to do with MTSS, however. Not only the huge task of implementing it and putting it into place, but there's still some training going on. So we will complete training all of our new staff. So we trained all of our staff who were here last year, but we've hired some new teachers. So one of our priorities right now is to ensure that they also get trained on the MTSS work. And then I want to let the Board know before I turn it over to our monitor that when we do this report out in October, we're going to spend some time going in a little bit more depth on our MTSS program. So that'll be part of our quarterly MTSS update, along with our, and then we will do our, I'm sorry. The MTSS requirement is once a year, but we're going to do it twice. The quarterly is updating the Board on our SPAD strategic plan and we will do that first one in November. Now, while I could go into a lot more detail on this stuff, I think it's going to be a lot more meaningful to hear it from our partner and our monitor, Lisa Shockley. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you, Jacob. And I'm sorry for my scratchy voice tonight. Thank you, Superintendent Segura and President Singh and Board of Trustees for allowing me just a few minutes tonight to provide an update on the agreed order. Over the past several months, as you know, Austin ISD has focused on meeting the requirements established in the agreed order. The following are a few highlights and key accomplishments for the district. As Jacob said, the district leadership and staff have engaged in extensive training to ensure alignment with operating procedures. Historically, some campuses have operated independently without adhering to uniform procedures for special ed in an effort to standardize some of those processes. Training programs have been implemented to enhance understanding and execution of programs for students with disabilities. Some of the training initiatives include ARD Committee Manager Training, supporting the development and implementation of high-quality individualized education plans, or IEPs, for administrators, development and implementation of a district-wide process to ensure parent participation in ARD meetings, creation and deployment of District-wide Special Education Evaluation Manual, and the development and rollout of a District-wide Multi-Tierred System of Supports, or MTSS, manual. As Jacob was talking about and has been mentioned a couple of times, in July, a Leadership Institute for All Principals, Assistant Principals and Executive Directors was conducted to train district leadership on the MTSS process and newly-developed MTSS manual. Subsequently, campus principals and instructional leaders are responsible for training the campus staff to ensure consistent implementation of the MTSS process across the district. Campus leadership teams have received training on progress monitoring and walkthroughs to ensure fidelity in program implementation. The training is scheduled to be presented to all teachers by September 1st. Calibration visits for fidelity of implementation of tiered instruction and specially-designed instruction will also commence this fall. The district has invested heavily in resources around professional learning for MTSS, differentiated instruction and implementation of IEPs. Also at the Leadership Institute, campus leaders and district staff were trained in various areas that will strengthen the implementation and delivery of individualized education programs for students. As defined by the agreed order, the training included differentiated instruction, supports for cultural and linguistic differences, universal design for learning, and high-quality instructional supports and materials. All of these topics will be included in the campus-based professional learning for instructional staff next week, along with the aligned resources and materials. As you know, Stetson and Associates conducted the required third-party audit. The findings from the audit informed the Special Ed Department's strategic plan, which was presented at the June board meeting. Over the summer, the district held a comprehensive summer evaluation clinic to ensure timely evaluations are conducted, both for initial referrals and reevaluations. I will say that my site visit to, my site visits to those summer evaluation clinics, I was so impressed with the organization and just the way that the Special Education Department made available almost every day during the week, including Sundays, to ensure the timely evaluations for our students. The Special Education Department has also partnered with the technology team for data visualization to assist staff with monitoring of those evaluations. The partnership highlights the shared responsibility among the departments and the staff. For Priority 3A of the order, the district recently submitted its first monthly report for district-wide monitoring of special education compliance. As part of this priority, a reporting dashboard was developed to ensure reliable and accurate data reporting for special ed. Improvements have been noted with the addition of the new reporting platforms that integrate multiple sources of data. Work on this area will continue, but our first report was, your first report was submitted to TEA earlier this month. The district is also working diligently on Priority 3B reporting, which involves detailed monthly reports focusing on several compliance areas and state reporting requirements. These reports must be finalized by October 1st, 2024, and the expectation is that they will be provided monthly to the agency and trustees for progress monitoring. Recently, Austin ISD received results from a targeted desk review conducted by the TEA. And we utilized 2023-24 school year data. The district was found compliant in 18 of the 18 folders reviewed in the areas of child find, evaluation, free appropriate public education, state assessment, and properly constituted ARDs. In the area of IEP development, the district was found only 83% compliant. Three of the 18 folders were missing essential components of how the student's impact of disability affected their education within the present levels of academic achievement and functional performance. The required corrective actions for this systemic error and systemic noncompliance will be addressed within the framework of the existing agreed order. The noncompliance must be corrected as soon as possible, but no later than one year from the date of the report. Overall, Austin ISD's staff have been strategically focused on fulfilling the tasks outlined in the order. The focus is leading to improved and aligned systems to yield better outcomes for students. Thank you.
Oh, there's more. Okay.
Yeah. So we're also excited to share on a priority that we've not touched on much up till now. And that is another one of the big first deliverables we had, and that's under Priority 3, improved data systems. And so I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Oscar Rodriguez, to take us through what we've been doing with Priority 3.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Reech. Good evening, Board of Trustees. So in keeping with the data theme for tonight and telling our story, we wanted to share our work and our progress towards Priority 3A as well as Priority 3B. If you, looking through the presentation, you'll see any successful initiative has those clear milestones to ensure that we know how to get the work done and meet the goals. And so starting earlier in the year, we began to synthesize findings from the Stetson Report, the order, and collaborating with our colleagues in special education to begin to develop the requirements, the technical requirements, the conceptualization of the blueprint of what this system would look like. And then we moved into looking at our data elements. We have a lot of data in a lot of places and data's fluid. And so understanding all of those places where we have data. Next, moving into May, we started implementing and building our approach to this. Without getting too technical, we built a cloud data warehouse to begin to consolidate and bring in all of the data from all of the different systems into a single place to facilitate the reporting capabilities. Then in June, we started to refine the data quality. So it's not just is their data, but is it correct? Is it logical? Is it valid? Is it reliable? And so focusing on those aspects. And then finally, recently, preparing the deliverable and making sure that all i's were dotted, t's were crossed with regards to submission for this first milestone and this first deliverable. Next slide, please. Nothing ever goes according to plan, so a couple of curves in the road. I think, you know, in listening to tonight's presentations, part of the reflection is while we're focused on data, we can't just focus on the technical aspects. We have to consider the system and consider people as well as processes because ultimately, systems, people, and processes all come together to form the system. So as we move forward, those are some of the reflections. So we'll talk through a couple of the bumps in the road, we'll call them. Unconsolidated data. We had a lot of data in a lot of different places and some of it matched, some of it didn't. And so this was part of that process to go through that. We also considered whether there were areas or gaps in the data. And so understanding what the root cause was for those things. And again, people, processes, systems, as far as, you know, the missing data. Updating of data. Data is fluid. Things change all the time. And so understanding how our systems reflect that and how our reporting could provide that picture of what is going on within the program as well as within the organization. And so we took some opportunity to put some improvements. We began a much more formal process to document our data. So in some earlier presentations, you may have heard the term "data governance." And so that's where we're going to establish formal control processes to make sure that all data changes are controlled and communicated across the organization because of the interdependencies of so many departments. We also looked at the inventory of the data elements and tracked them down to make sure that we knew where they originated within our systems. And then lastly, the integration of all of those data concepts into a singular place. Knowing the challenge with managing student outcomes and programs and all of the changes that we're going through as an organization, the expectation of having someone sit through and open up three different windows to try to find and track data isn't effective. It isn't sustainable and it's not efficient. And so this approach allowed us to consolidate and bring all of those things together in a single, single package. Next slide, please. Other bumps in the road, so while all of this is going on, TEA, the agency, is also in the middle of changing PEEM standards. And so we are, we're working through the methodology and the framework that has existed in years prior while understanding what the future state impacts could be. And so working with our PEEMs team and our colleagues in special education and understanding what is the now versus what is going to be the future and what decisions and what things we needed to work through. Understanding the system of reporting, this is not, I believe, in terms of just checking the box for the order. This is really a philosophy of understanding, do we know what's going on with our organization? And having clear and transparent information about how things are moving within the organization and being proactive to, you know, identify any areas of improvement. And then lastly, the process around data validation. You know, an example is we may run a report and we may find that there is a date value. But then, as I've learned, working with Dr. Robert and being more educated around special education, there are particular processes that are very linear that have a logic around what the sequence of dates are. Well, if we run a report and there's a date and it doesn't match with the process, that is part of that checks and balances to make sure that everything is logical, sensible, and is valid. And so through our improvements, again, we integrated, we updated our PEEMs data standards to consider that. We created the dashboard, so you'll hear about that as a product. The idea and the philosophy behind the dashboard is we understand that our instructional leaders are under immense pressure and have a lot on their plates. How can we sift through the data to give them the key actions, deliverables, findings that they need in order to maneuver and manage their programs at the local campus? And then thinking through a long-term strategic plan for data, not just within Priority 3, but also within the full order and, you know, philosophically as an organization. How do we operationalize data so that it just doesn't, you know, the work to extract data isn't cumbersome? We know that our stakeholders need data for their day-to-day decision-making. So why wait to, you know, develop a system that forces someone to pull a report? Is there an opportunity to push the data and push the data that they need to be able to, you know, run the day-to-day operations? And so those are things that we took as part of our action. This was a monumental collaboration. So definitely a strong partnership with Dr. Rob, Robert and her team in special education, with many of our technology staff. And I'd also like to say, also with our strategic vendor partner, so this is a snapshot of just one week of work. Even though there was the district efficiency schedule on a Friday, the work required for us to be here that, you know, on one of those weekends and work through what we needed to work through, our vendor partner flew in staff here to Austin and they joined us as part of that session to work through and understand how the system could be maybe reconfigured or what are some things that we could do differently in order to meet the objectives that we were trying to meet as an organization? Next slide, please. So looking ahead, we are in August and we've submitted our first report. We have our next deliverable, Part B, due in October, but we will have another report due here in September. While we're focused on meeting the objectives of the order, I think that's the floor. The idea that we're trying to look at through this opportunity is how do we build a more, a better picture of everything that's going on within special education? Where do we find opportunities to build inefficiencies for our program owners and our instructional leaders? We will still continue to refine and iterate through this. One of the planned tasks that we have here before the end of the year is to bring this dashboard to our stakeholders, our instructional leaders, and say, of all of these things, what are the things that you need day-to-day to ensure that you can make decisions or take actions at a local level efficiently in order to ensure that we're providing all of these things to our students as an organization? And so looking forward to the future, definitely looking at an ongoing effort to support all of the decision-making that happens day-to-day at our campuses to ensure we have the best outcomes. outcomes for students. And with that, that, open for questions.
Yeah, and before we turn it over to the trustees, you know, August 1st was circled in my calendar for a very, very long time. When it comes to the first deliverable under Priority Three, it was one that, you know, and I'm maybe being vulnerable here as far as, you know, maybe where TA viewed Austin ISD as being most vulnerable as far as having the biggest challenges, over time and time again, it was around data. It just, it just was. And so, when we knew that we had to go through this process to deliver this deliverable, it took a lot of people, working for a very long time. Bumps in the road, I mean, maybe like potholes, I mean, there's like all sorts of things. It was challenging for the team. I think there were definitely times along the way where we questioned whether we were to get there or not, but definitely want to commend Dr. Robinette, Special Education team, Oscar, your team in Technology, definitely Patty, the Teaching Leading Learning team, our monitors. It took everybody. This was a huge lift. So, congratulations. It's a long way to go, but this was one big milestone, and just couldn't be more appreciative of all the work that the entire system put into this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so trustees, are there any questions? Yes, trustee Lugo.
No, I just want to say thank you again. I mean, like, I can't, for folks who don't work in data, they might be like, oh, it is monumental, and it requires a lot of time and attention and detail and head scratching and tears probably, maybe in the bathroom, right, by yourself. So, thank you so much to all the folks who put in this effort and share our appreciation to them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Sapata.
Yes, thank you. This excellent, excellent work that you're doing. I was curious as, if there are like some forms of alerts, so that as people, people can enter data, right, every day, all day? And so, are there alerts like someone, a counselor can put notes in there? Now, I heard that the counselor would have access to that data, so when they put their notes in there, and then, there's a way that someone's monitoring that the student is having discipline or whatever issues, you know, how are we connecting the support, like mental health services, as red flags, as an intervention, using this data as an intervention to get alerts that we need to call a student in, you know? So, that's just a question, if there's a systemic way you're thinking about that?
I guess I would like to defer maybe to Dr. Robinette, but ultimately, yes, we can build certain things that inform practice, and so, maybe not specifically around an individual student, but one thing that we're sort of working through is, if we know that there's timelines on a process, being able to, sort of using the, like a stoplight, red, yellow, green, to categorize what events are approaching a particular deadline as an alert to say, these are, these are beginning to hit maybe that timeline visually as opposed to those that are, still have a little more time. For an administrator that is looking and needs to know high level, what are the things that I need to ensure happen today? We could also do that for other staff as well.
Okay. Thank you for the question, trustee Sapata. I like the way you're thinking, and the reason I say that is, the particular dashboarding and reporting that we're doing to the state specifically around the Special Education Agreed Order is heavily around timely evaluations, programs, and services for students, the percentages of students that we have, and in particular, the least restrictive environments, the kinds of related services supports. And that, part of that's actually going to be in the October reporting, but for this phase, this was the level of dashboarding and information to provide to the state. The way you're thinking, however, is exactly and precisely sort of the development of the state of where Chief Rodriguez indicated we want to continue to move. We have found in our parallel initial systems that we set into place to really make progress on student outcomes. It isn't only data visualization, it is those alerts, it's actually progress monitoring through the system. And so, we have found success where we have, for lack of a better description, sort of alerts and notifications going to people all the way through the systems to sort of shepherd or pick up things and move things along, and likewise, examine where patterns don't look consistent and we need to make some interventions. So, although this process is very specific to the TEA Agreed Order and around sort of the more commonly reported Special Education compliance indicators, it's a greater look, and I think that's what Chief Rodriguez was alluding to, into a broader system and the implications of some really strong data governance, data management, and then, data infusion into our, what we call our strategic thinking about how to best serve our students. So.
Thank you. Yes, I was thinking more for us, that will support that report, right? So, thank you for that.
Yes, trustee Hoffman.
Yes, thank you. I'll echo the gratitude for all the hard work and all the systemic efforts that are going to simultaneously addressing all of the TEA specific order pieces and also, also focusing on improving outcomes for kids, which are hopefully aligned, but they're not exactly the same thing. So, I appreciate you keeping your eye on both. I just have a question, I guess, around the parent piece, so this might be most for Matthias and Drew, but the, I appreciate that there's a focus on family, on family outreach in this effort, and I appreciate the transparency around the communication on the website around the court order, I mean, around the TEA order and also the progress. I just want to encourage you to continue, continue that. And so, like on the, on the webpage where it has the TEA updates, it kind of ends with, we're going to provide monthly reports, but I would encourage us to post the reports on there rather than sending people to board docs, just to make them more accessible. I'm curious about the family, the, what is it called? The SEPEC?
Special Education Family Advisory.
Yes, the CECAC. To update that as well with the upcoming meetings, because it kind of ends with April is the last 2024 meeting, so I'm very curious, just so our families know the upcoming meetings for this coming year as well, with the quarterly meetings for that. And then, also, you made reference, I think, earlier, you made reference, sorry, to the, to the framework for the family outreach, and I just would encourage us to also make that public so people understand as our, as you're working to outreach to communities, this is what it can look like, what you can expect. So, I just encourage you to update some of that stuff so that people don't have to come to the board meeting or look at board docs to get the updates. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hoffman. Anyone else? Yes, Secretary Boswell.
I want to add my gratitude to all of you for all the work that's been done, and I know this is, you know, our staff in this building, every single person who's on our campuses, our monitors have certainly played a role in this. And the seriousness with which everyone is taking this, for our students and for the order, which is a really big deal, shows, and I think it's something where there's no room to stumble, there's no room for people to get it wrong, and people are really showing up to do it, and really appreciate the work that we're doing together as a board as well to work toward this, and just want to share just gratitude for the entire system pulling in the same direction and the changes we're seeing for our students and what's possible. So, just want to add my gratitude to that.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you all so much. We appreciate all the good work. Thank you.
Jacob, do you want to say something, or?
Oh, yes.
Trustees, I also want to mention, we weren't originally planning on doing one of our three-month averages for the amount of time that the board has spent, but we did end up holding a special meeting in July, so I want to make sure that we're still putting that into the record. And so, for the month of July, the board did have a meeting, but it was on VADER, so we did, we did not spend any time on student outcomes in that meeting. However, our three-month average for May, June, and July is still 56.6%. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
And that's 56.6% on student outcomes and Special Education.
Correct. I'm sorry, thank you so much, spending on student outcomes and Special Education.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And do we have the figure for the amount of time we spent in the exact session?
For the July meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can we come back and talk about that later? Because I think we owe that as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so, our next item is a discussion on the Lone Star Governance Constraints. So, we are joined tonight by our LSG coach, Ashley Paz, on Zoom, I believe, and Secretary Boswell has worked with Ms. Paz to develop some draft constraints for us. I will just pass it along to you, Secretary Boswell.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Ashley, for being with us and for the guidance you've provided along the way. I appreciate it very much. We talked about guardrails that, I know we did some training about this when we were talking about our scorecard, and this was wrapped into that, so we talked about the board constraints, but are developing them separately. The hope is to come up with things tonight that we can adopt on the 22nd at our, our voting meeting, and we need to have at least one up to five. And we have drafted three, and then, Ashley's coaching is that we could divide number two into two separate guardrails, so we can share those as well. And I think one of the, the things Ashley said about these is, I'll read from your email, Ashley, when I'm reviewing board constraints, it's most important that they be meaningful, and these seem very meaningful. So, that's, you know, kind of our starting point from the coaching, so thank you for your guidance on that, Ashley. So, we have them in board docs. Jacob, can we get them up on the screen so people, so our community can see them? And the trustees together? So, these are the three we came up with, and I think the idea is, we went and looked back at our, our board operating manual, but we didn't want it to just echo what was on the operating manual, because we need to follow that, and pulling some things out made other things seem less important, and we don't need to repeat what we already have. So, the idea was to get some, to something that really gets deeper to the values we have as a board, kind of how we're doing our work, not just what we're doing, but how we're doing it. And so, the three that we, drafts we've come up with, one, the first one is about community engagement. The board will not exclude community voices, including students, family, staff, and then other district residents, when making major district-wide decisions about topics, including the budget, superintendent hiring, bond elections, and district goals and guardrails. And that, that's inclusive but not exclusive, other major decisions as well. The second one, and I'll read it as the composite, and then, I'll read the, the kind of 2A and 2B that Ashley suggested. The board will not fail to listen to each other's perspectives, share duties that occur outside of board meetings, and offer support to each other as we work together to govern and oversee the management of Austin ISD. And Ashley read my mind and said that she felt like we were having struggles with the "will not allow" language, which is, you know, grammatically has, has been difficult kind of throughout. And her suggestion is that we had, we split it into two. The first, her suggestion is, the board will not allow a disproportionate distribution of governance-related duties among individual trustees. And the second she, half, she recommends is, the board will not disregard the diversity of thought, contributions, and perspectives of individual trustees, was Ashley's suggestion. And then, guardrail three, the board will not seek to favor any trustee, district, or group over the interests of the school district as a whole, which is really what the statute calls us to do. And the expectation is that we will, you know, understand our individual districts and operate with the goal of the district as a whole. And we're unusual in Texas that we do have single-member districts. Many Texas districts don't have that, and I think just a reminder that we're in, this is our situation, and it felt worth calling out. So, those are the, those are our proposals. Ashley, do you have anything to add right now?
All right, you've done a great job so far. You, you have almost worked me out of a job, Trustee Boswell.
So, do we have discussion on these? Do we, the goals to get to at least one and up to five that we can adopt on the 22nd? Trustee Hoffman?
May I ask questions about them?
Yes.
So, remind me, in this process, are we then also setting progress measures for these and other indicators, or how do we? And then, what's our accountability to ourselves in terms of adhering to these?
Ashley? Did you hear the question?
Yeah, so, I did. And so, unlike superintendent constraints, where you do have the constraint progress measures, your board constraints or your board guardrails are going to be, so they are not going to be measured by individual progress measures, because these are set by the board for the board. And so, whereas the superintendent constraints are set by the board, and then, the constraint progress measures are essentially how the superintendent reports to the board, whether or not they're being, they're being honored by the district, for the, the way that the board will monitor these is by, so generally, every quarter, when you do your self-evaluation, which I know we're going to have that conversation a little bit later, you would essentially ask the question, does anyone have evidence that any of the board, board constraints or board guardrails have been violated or have not been honored? Or you have that conversation, that can be something that you submit through a document online prior to the, to the self-evaluation, but essentially, it's something that is monitored throughout the, throughout the year as part of your self-evaluation process.
Thank you. Other questions, suggestions, reactions?
So, I wanted to ask, and I apologize if you already went over this, do we want to pick one of these, or?
We need to pick at least one.
Okay.
We can pick up to five, and we have these three in this form, but Ashley also suggested dividing number two into two separate constraints that are worded differently. And so, we really have up to four in a way that we can consider.
Okay. And is there one that seems like the favorite? If we were to pick one?
I mean, my opinion, I like guardrail draft one. The board will not exclude community voices.
I see thumbs up from trustee Gonzalez.
I agree. I was going to say number one, if there's one that I'm leaning towards.
I do, too.
As compared to the superintendent constraints and the goals, where the downside of having too many is an overload of the system and an inability to focus in and get results on one, or two, or three, what would be the downside of having all three of these, if these are really much more about self-governing how we get along? Like, what would be the downside of having three or four?
Ashley?
That's actually a great question, Dr. Hoffman, and so, I'm going to go back to the reason that we have board guardrail work constraints. So, just like the constraints for the superintendent, these are specific operational actions or classes of actions that the board places on itself and it, and/or that the board places on itself and, and/or its members to support behaviors that, so where the superintendent constraints are going to allow, they're going to create more flexibility for the superintendent and essentially put boundaries around the values of the community. With the board, the board guardrails, creating a system where the board's focus or the board's work is going to be in a situation for that, for the board to focus more on board work, work that is aligned with the vision and the goals, and that is grounded in the community value. These are going to stay, kind of stay in their lane, not getting too much into micromanagement of the school system, which I don't know if that's necessarily an issue that you all are dealing, that you all deal with. I would say that. So helping promote teamwork and trust. And the way that you engage with the, engage with your community, the, that you, so, you know, whether you pick one or, or some number in between, the really important part is that whatever you do go with, it is going to help you focus, focus on the work that you all need to do and to, that it's going to be a value-add for the board rather than just kind of adopting something for the purpose of adopting it.
Thank you, Ashley. And you were breaking up a little bit. Did everyone catch enough of what Ashley was saying? Okay. Thank you.
I also just want to, well, thank you for the committee who came up with these. But I, I'm wondering, are we thinking in terms of both how we know we, as a board, this group of nine can, you know, set limits on ourselves to, to our best work on behalf of students and, and supporting the superintendent, and thinking back to previous boards where we've made an effort to do things differently, right? Or, or, you know, looking back at previous boards and thinking, wow, I wish we had done more of that. Let's put that into the guardrail so that we can do more of what that board used to do, or vice versa. But also then looking at the upcoming elections, also setting in place guardrails that will help protect the board's work should the next group not have, you know, be constructed the same way as us, right? I mean, if, you know, so that we don't have a new person disrupt and shift our focus to things that aren't any supportive students. So I'm just wondering, like, are we thinking in terms of past, present, and future in how we're setting these?
I think we certainly should be. And I, you know, I think that's a good question to ask about what we have in front of us, or whether we want to change anything, add, delete, or adapt what we have. Are we capturing what we think is most important? And something that will, that isn't addressing the current moment, but that's addressing larger principles and concepts and values.
And as you were talking, Trustee Kaufman, I was, I sort of looked at these through different lens, and I think, I think I like all three of them, but if we are really thinking about, and this is not unique to this board, but like most school boards, it's, it ends up, I don't know, I'm wondering if, like, that idea of supporting each other and working together really resonates with me, and that language is in, in guardrail two. So I don't know. Probably that's one that speaks to me a little bit.
And Ashley, is guardrail two, I know you suggested dividing it, is guardrail two acceptable like it is? Or is there a double negative that makes it something we would not be allowed to adopt?
No, it's, so it is perfectly fine the way that it's written. The, the suggestion for splitting it into two essentially came because it'll make it easier, it'll make it more clear to monitor down the road. But it's absolutely acceptable as is.
Thank you.
Well, just summarize, I, in thinking past, present, and future, I think all three are well-written and important.
Do we feel like maybe we want to adopt all three of these? Is that kind of?
Trustee Kaufman, do we have a motion? Is that, are we, are we ready to?
I mean, I don't think we, well, we're not going to vote on this until.
Oh, that's right. We're not going to vote on it. That's right.
But I think this is maybe consensus building. And what we bring forward as a motion for when we meet in the 22nd, would it be possibly for all three of these? And?
So I would support all three. I would also support any one that the rest of the group agrees to. If we limit it to one, I'm okay with any of them.
What do you think, Trustee Gonzalez?
Looking at it through the lens that Trustee Kaufman just suggested, I, I see, well, yeah, I can see all three working in favor of stabilizing, continuing what we've built so far the past couple of years. So I changed my mind from just supporting one.
Okay.
Yeah, I think given that it's not taking meeting time to kind of go through them and monitor them in the same way, I do see the, the sense in that. If we feel like they all reflect something that is larger, that is, kind of captures values, community values and board values.
Can I make one suggestion? So for guardrail two, can the board consider a slight edit here, maybe saying, "The board will not fail to actively listen"? I toyed around with the idea of like respectfully, I'm having flashbacks. So I, I'm thinking about my own self, too, right? Like, did I do a good job? Maybe I didn't. Maybe I could have done better. But yeah, just for consideration, maybe having something like actively listen or respectfully listen professionally, you know, some, something there. Because I know things can get really passionate and heated. You know, we all care deeply.
Yeah. Do we want to add that word? I'm great with that. I think there are many kinds of listening, and naming it, I think, has value.
So I'm in agreement, too, with all three. And I was just thinking, if this was my first day as a trustee, and I, and this was, I would read this, then it would give me, you know, begin getting my thinking as a team. Because there's, people think they'll come up here and they're going to get all these things done by themselves, right? And so, but I think this sets a tone that we're a team and we're going to work together. And so I like all three. Thank you.
I was just going to agree with Trustee Lugo's point, maybe professionally. I think that creates some accountability around that guardrail number two, because I've definitely seen, not here, of course, but other places.
All of us as unpaid volunteer professionals, yes.
Would like to say one more thing if I can. The, I feel like our board in this current era is working towards improvement through the external pressure of Lone Star Governance and the TEA order. So we're, we're working very hard to improve things based on some guidelines and measures that are being presented to us. So I think we have our hands full with that in that we're doing our best to, to make that a positive thing. That said, I think these three guardrails are fairly low bars for us as, as currently constructed, because I feel like we feel that we're doing these three things pretty well right now. So I would just say, I would, I look forward to having more perhaps challenging guardrails in the future when we're more governing ourselves rather than being governed in order to, you know, because I feel like this would be a way for us to really put pressure on ourselves to improve through the guardrails. I don't think that's necessary right now because our pressure to improve is coming from elsewhere. But I think this is a good thing to kind of look ahead to post TEA order, saying we should really deeply look at what's getting in the way of our being effective, what's getting in our way of, of creating supportive environment for our superintendent to be successful, and then set some guardrails that push us harder. But these, I think, are perfect for right now. And I think these also set the stage for if we have new voices in the board, starting in December, that they enter with these expectations as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And Ashley, while we have you here, I know the scorecard is something we set up and maintain over a long period of time. What's your coaching about how often it's reasonable or wise, or under what circumstances we would want to kind of adapt new board constraints?
Yeah. So you wouldn't want to change your board constraints more than once per year. But usually, it is appropriate to reevaluate them every, on an annual basis. And so especially a campaign or election cycle coming up, it would be good to, so it's good to adopt them now, before you get to that point, so that it's not something that the board, so if you do have new trustees who get elected in the, and sworn in in January, then that'll essentially give you several months of runway before you have to engage in any kind of continuous improvement efforts around these board guardrails. And there's no, there's no rule that says that you have to change it every year. I just wouldn't change more frequently than that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Secretary Boswell. Appreciate that. And I think the only two cents I would add to this is, I feel like some of this is coming from our own internal, you know, values as well. I think that even, you know, I, just to kind of give a fuller picture, that yes, we are under TEA, you know, agreed order to create this, but I think it's probably something that we have, we'll, we would have, you know, strived to do anyway, in some sense. But I do agree with the idea of like going back and revisiting this when we're in a different situation. I don't know how others feel, but if anybody else has comments on that, I'd be happy to hear them. Okay. All right. Thank you all. Okay, so now we will jump into our last information item for tonight, which is an operational update on the, on the VADER. And according to the LSG process, this is identified as an important role of the board, but it's not a discussion directly on student outcomes. So this time would count towards our adult-focused outcomes. So we have scheduled about 15 minutes for this discussion. So Mr. Segura?
Thank you, President Singh and trustees. I'd like to welcome Dr. Reach, Chief Officer of Government Relations and Board Services, and Katrina Montgomery, our Acting Chief Financial Officer. And this is a continuation of the competition we had on July 23rd. And so it is meant to be brief, and we'll have obviously a potential vote on the 15th. But Jacob will bring up the presentation here and kicking us off.
Thank you, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Segura. So we want to provide an update on our VADER and share with you some of the upcoming steps. This is not meant to be a full presentation on the VADER since we had an in-depth discussion with the board in July. But we do want to let you know what we've done since we've last met and what we have coming up. So first, oh, and of course, our checkmarks went off a little bit. Always happens when you use Google Slides and then change to Microsoft PowerPoint. So I'm very sorry about that. But where we're at is, the board has already approved our budget. We've also started our realignment process, and we actually held our first meeting for that Tuesday night. And we have the information that we need from TCAD and from TEA. And so these last two days, we actually hosted VADER community conversations. And I want to share a little bit about that. So we held three meetings, two for the public at large and one for staff, although individuals were welcome to any of them. We had good turnout for our community meetings online, and we had a lot of great questions. And so what you can see here is actually the number of participants for each one of our meetings, and then a word cloud based off of questions and words that we heard from our community. So during those conversations, we were able to talk a little bit about what a VADER would do, why we need it, and what's the other work that we're doing to still address our deficit. What we've learned from there is some of the other questions that we know we need to be ready to share out to our community. And so to that end, we'll also be preparing an FAQ and a website to provide factual information to our community about what a VADER is, what it would mean for Austin ISD, and how they can get more information. So I would want to end by just reminding our public, as Trustee Singh said at the beginning of this meeting, the board is scheduled next Thursday, the 14th, to have a public hearing on a VADER, and then move into a special meeting where they will consider voting on a VADER. If that is approved and a VADER is called, then that would go to our November 5th general election. And so we are, yeah, I'm so sorry about our, we need to work on our, yeah. Yeah, but that's the next week. And so just the, the last thing I'd mention before I turn it back over to the trustees, if there's any questions, is that this budget alignment work is going on along with this. And our budget for next year is going to start soon. And so we really want to make sure that we're doing all these processes in parallel with one another because they complement one another. And we need to understand what's going on with one to help build out what's going on with another. So happy to turn it over to the trustees, see if there's any questions.
Trustees, any questions?
I have two questions. One is, do you know when the FAQ will likely be ready? And the website for information, I have, even ahead of the vote, I have PTA leaders reaching out to me, planning newsletters to go out, you know, kind of early in the year. And, and people are very eager to share facts and information with communities.
Yeah.
Oh, it's available now on the website. Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent.
Just come up.
Good evening, trustees. Ali Giller-Ducci, Chief of Communications and Community Engagement. It is available on the website now. It's austinisd.org/board/B A T R E. If you scroll down, there's FAQ sectioned by topic. I do not know right now if the Spanish is available. If it isn't now, it will be by the end of this week.
Perfect. Thank you so much. That's, people will be very happy to hear that. I appreciate that. And my second question is, I got to drop into those engagement meetings and see, and I have a question about the amount that we think is going to recapture. I think we had talked about 130 million-ish in our meetings, but then I heard 114. Are there new calculations that have shown us something different? I guess that's a Ms. Montgomery question or a Dr. Reach question.
Yeah. And so one of the items that we were waiting on was our final appraised values from TCAD. And that helps us with that final step of really understanding where those numbers are going to be. And so now that we have those numbers, we are doing the last math that we need to be able to say, what will that mean for overall revenue? What will that mean? Which of course also drives recapture. And so we do expect that that number will change. I believe, we believe that it'll go up, that both numbers will go up a little. Is that correct? So overall, revenue brought in from our VADER will go up a little bit. So we'll recapture, and potentially so will the amount that we have that would not be subject to recapture. And we would be able to share that final data once we have our partners help certify that at the meeting next week.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
But we wanted it to be final, and we wanted the opportunity to explain, here is why it changed.
Thank you.
Before we share that data out.
Appreciate that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Kaufman?
I have no questions, but I just want to welcome Katrina Montgomery to this new role and to say that at a very challenging time with our budget in terms of making some very tough decisions this year on how to balance a budget, and how to pay the bills on a daily basis, and how to help us, you know, lead into this potential vote for tax ratification. It's a very important time for our financial department, and I have tremendous confidence, having seen you at these meetings and seeing you in the background and seeing you at the table various times, that I appreciate your stepping forward to provide the leadership we need right now and to keep a steady hand at this important work. So, thank you.
Thank you, I think that sentiment is shared by all of us on the dais, so. I wanted to ask a question to our superintendent or to our interim CFO. Could you talk, so, you know, one of the things that I've been hearing, or I think one of the things that would be really important for our public to hear is some explanation of the financial controls that we have in the district to ensure that, you know, we're asking the public for, you know, millions of dollars in taxes, basically. And we want to, how do, how can we assure the public that we are being really good stewards?
Absolutely, I'll start off, and Katrina will correct me where I'm wrong, for sure. So every year, we have an annual audit. It is an independent audit. That audit is submitted to TEA, it's like over 1,000 pages, it's big. They come in, they spend time within the finance division, they, Katrina's been leading a lot of that work, honestly, for the last couple of years. And then there's a presentation that goes to the board, and so that is, that is one aspect, and it occurs every single year. Any minor issues or adjustments are done, and those are submitted. So that is one way, and that has been the case, and we've had, been in good standing for, I mean, I've never even known when we weren't. The other thing that occurs is Gibson is the auditor that reports directly to the board. They also perform area audits. This is not necessarily a function of areas of concern in the district, it's really a function of where the risk exists, because there are either complicated operational components, or there are lots of dollars moving through those systems. And so they've done a variety of area audits within finance, including payroll, SHARs, and procurement, over the last two years. There are other divisions they've, they've audited as well, but it's just another control that is the independent that we have. And again, all of those have been submitted to the board, reported to the board, and any corrective actions have been taken. But again, they've all been minimal, and hasn't, there hasn't really been any concern. So there are multiple controls. You know, not to speak to anything more broadly than that, Katrina can certainly add to it, but we also work with our financial advisors. Any assumptions that we develop, we work with our financial advisors and bring into our models. So, you know, I think as we talk about where we are as an organization, I want to kind of assure our community, assure our board, that we've, we have strong controls in place, they've been in place. Katrina's continuing, going to continue to be able to lead that work, and we've been able to implement with fidelity for quite some time. And so Katrina, what else, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I think you did a really good job. TEA audits us as well, that would be one more that we would probably include. We're audited all the time, so our records are open, you can see, you can look and make sure, if you feel comfortable. But our records are clean.
Not to mention our first rating, and our, can you explain a little bit what that means?
Yeah, so the first rating is a rating that's done by the Texas Education Agency, and it looks at like, what, maybe 13 different areas to see how the district is doing. We also have our bond ratings, we had a call like last week, or earlier this week. So there's various ways that we can have our finances reviewed for accuracy, to make sure there's no, no issues, no controls that aren't being followed.
And our first rating was above 90 for the third year, fourth year in a row, which is superior. And we've had multiple, I'm sorry? Yeah, 12 years, yeah. Well, since I've been in, oh yeah, 100%. And then as far as AAA bond rating, I mean, there's only what, eight or nine other school districts in the city of Texas that carry that rating, and more than that, less than that?
Probably less than that. But we have our financial advisors here who can help us if we need it.
Great, thank you. All right, trustees, any other questions or comments? Okay, fantastic, thank you all very much. Okay, so now we are going to move on to the next item, but before that, should, you had just told me the session minutes?
Absolutely, as part of our monthly reporting, we did want to report out the number of minutes in executive sessions. We were able to collect that information, and it was 62 minutes in the month of July. So, for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me.
Sure, sure. Okay, so, so this ends the section on the information reports for the administration, so we will now move on to the preview agenda items. So we will, we will start with item seven, which is academics and curriculum. So are there any questions on any of these items? Okay, the, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to point out that 7.5, no, not 7.5, where is the? Yes, thank you, you knew what I was going to talk about. Literacy First, I just want, just to kind of give them a shout out, if you, if anybody cares enough, to actually go into Board Docs and see the evaluation report from Literacy First. It is super compelling to see the results that this organization has brought. And I, the reason I bring it up is because it is so difficult and rare in education to, to really have the evidence of interventions that we're doing with students, and show the evidence that it works. And what they've done is basically compared students who qualified for Literacy First, and basically compared the kids who qualified but did Literacy First with those who qualified but didn't partake in Literacy First, so you can actually compare the two groups. And the results are pretty startling. I think we saw, it was, I think, I want to say, I know it's in here somewhere. I want to say it was something like 60%, like the kids that did Literacy First, and maybe, Jacob, help me out, it's like 65% better, or something like that. It was quite a stark difference. There's a couple of graphs on here that I just love. I'm sorry, I do, it kind of reminds me of the graphs we saw earlier with the, with the industry certifications, but you'll see that like the students who did Literacy First basically had a much steeper increase in their letter sound fluency, decoding, and other really critical reading skills, oral fluency, all the things that we talk about with the science of reading, you know, compared to the students who qualified for Literacy First but didn't do it. And so I guess one of the things that I would love for us to think about, just going forward in, in our retreat tonight, when we talk about guardrails, is how do, how do we use this as an example, or think about identifying the programs that we see, real clear evidence that they work? And what is like the cost-effectiveness of these compared to other things that we're doing? And so, like this is something that's highly subsidized, and just wanted to point this out, because it's so relevant to the work that, that we're doing with our budget right now, and with student achievement. But Jacob, did you, do you want to just, I don't know if you have the slides handy?
And I've got it up as well, if we could screen share. But we do see, looking at the report and the data provided to us through this Literacy First report, that 61% of the students were above the level expected. And then looking at the graphs, there they are, let me make them a little bigger. And so what you can see, looking at these graphs, the red line is the control group that they utilize, and the blue line is the student who received the Literacy First program. And then the green line was their goal, and they didn't quite meet it, but they're right there, and you can see the different growth that they had for the students who received the Literacy First intervention, which again, is that blue line. And this first one is kindergarten letter sounds, and then it's going through the different test portions, so decoding.
Great, thank you. Thank you, I just wanted to, so I'm excited that we're continuing our partnership with this organization. So trustees, are there any other questions or comments on section seven of the agenda preview? Trustee Hoffman, were you going to say something? Okay. All right, so we will move on to section eight, which is the board administration. And I did want to, if Ashley is still around and not caught up in the hurricane that is now battering where she is at this moment. One of the things that we're going to be doing on the 22nd is approving our self-evaluation. I think that's on here, right? Is that in this section?
Yeah, it is 12 point.
Oh, sorry, that's section 12, okay.
13.2.
Oh, 13.2, sorry, I got ahead of myself. Okay, so we're in section eight, so any questions on section eight? Okay. Section nine, business and finance, any questions there? All right, how about section 10, facilities? 11, talent strategy, questions or comments? Okay, number 12, policy. Okay, and then 13 is other. And I did want us to go, I don't know if Ashley's around and can present our, or just very briefly go over our yearly evaluation that we as a board do for ourselves, using the Lone Star Governance rubric. Yay, you're there.
The hurricane hasn't run me away yet.
Okay, good, thank goodness.
All right, so this, so it's time again for your next quarterly self-evaluation, and this actually will be, is not just your quarterly self-evaluation, but it will be your annual self-evaluation. And so I have worked with, with President Singh to identify where we believe the board is currently at, from your, your implementation of Lone Star Governance. The overall score is, that we've identified is 66 points. That's 66 points out of 100. The goal that you all have, so I think your goal for actual implementation for LSG is 60. So you all have officially met that goal, so that is a really great thing. So congratulations, and also, I think it's, it is worth noting that exactly a year ago today was our first time together for your Lone Star Governance retreat. So you have accomplished something that many boards don't do in two years, in exactly one year. So I think that the board definitely deserves a moment of celebration for having accomplished this.
Yay!
So on that.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah, celebrate!
We are overachievers up here. But we appreciate your help, and I got to give a shout out to Jacob too, because he's been instrumental in keeping us on track with all of this.
Definitely, definitely. And so what I have assessed for, for Austin ISD, so as I mentioned, not many boards get to this point in implementation in their first year. You have a very strong board that has been very committed to accomplishing the tasks to, to get to this point. It's not just the board alone, but also the administration. The fact that you do have a strong superintendent, and he has assembled a strong team to get you all to this point is another, another fact that should not be discounted. And so you're at 66 points in your implementation. So from the first, so you've got vision and goals, one through four, progress and accountability, one and two, and systems and processes. Those are all of the different categories of Lone Star Governance, where you have achieved the MEETS focus criteria. So you have met focus in each of those sections, or I guess you will, as of the next meeting, when you adopt your board guardrails. And so when you, when you meet that threshold, then you will have gotten an average of MEETS focus across the entire rubric. For the final three sections, that is systems and processes, communication and accountability, and then the final is called synergy and teamwork. So these are, these are the sections that, where the board is creating conditions for this level of implementation to be sustainable for the long term. And so the big, if the board desires to, to advance into MEETS focus on those, the closest section for you to be able to accomplish is under the synergy and teamwork area. There's just one, one final piece of that criteria, where it's the board that takes, is taking on the work of implementing LSG rather than the superintendent. And really, the only thing that, that relies on is that the board, that board members are keeping track of the, of your time use for the, for the month, instead of the, the staff. And that doesn't mean that staff can't also do it as well, which I think they would want to because of the order. But there is benefit in board members taking on that responsibility, primarily so that you can actually, so that you're doing your own math, so to speak. When, when board members are going through that process of calculating your time and seeing what, what different time use happens, where the, the work begins to become more sustainable, and boards tend to take, take it on for a longer, a longer term. So that's my recommendation for moving, moving up. You only actually gain two more points on the rubric, but again, this isn't about getting points on a rubric, it's actually doing the work. But that's a general overview of the, of the self-evaluation. I'm happy to answer any questions about the specifics, or between now and the next board meeting. I'm also happy to meet individually with any board members, if you'd like to review it together, or talk about some of the work that is to come over the next year, or just answer any of your questions in general. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, President Singh, and open the floor for any questions that any board members have.
Thank you, Ashley. I can't believe it's been a year to the day. You have helped us tremendously, and we very much appreciate it. And thank you to this board as well, for just all the hard work that you've taken, that you've done for us to implement LSG, so thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Okay, thanks, Ashley, appreciate it. Okay, so this ends our regular.
There's still another thing at 13.
Oh, yeah, did you have a question about?
I have a question and a comment, yes.
Yes, okay, 13.1. This is related to on-ramps.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my questions in the tracker before the next cut-off, before the 22nd meeting, but I think that we have some work we need to do. I have some preliminary data, this is just literally back of the envelope, chicken scratch. I'm not going to call the school names, I will not do that. But this is crazy what I'm seeing. So this one particular school in 21, 22, 70% failed rhetoric in the fall, 54% in the spring, 50, in 22, 23, 59 and 61, fall and spring. 23, 24, 47 and 42, so they are improving. In US history, 45%, 60, 71, 75, 51, 61. This is the whole school that took this particular subject. So for the next school is rhetoric, in the fall and rhetoric in the spring. In 21, 22, in the fall, 97% did not earn credit. In the spring, 94% did not earn credit. That's 21, 22. 22, 23, 100% did not earn credit, 97% did not earn credit. In 23, 24, 88% did not earn credit, 86% did not earn credit in, in, in the spring. This is the third school. In US history, they only did US history, from 21 and 22, 58 and 50, which is not bad. And then 70, it gets worse. I have so many questions about what kind of controls, and then there's the thing that really is super confusing, and I'm worried about students, is that if 100% of students did not earn credit, and only 75% denied the credit, they're starting up, we have to, we're not explaining this to them. They don't know what they're getting into, because maybe they're not going to go to college right away, but when they do go, they're going to be hit in the face. And I wish I could say, these three are isolated cases. And there are schools that you're like, that's not happening, and you look, and I'm like, that school has 86% kids not getting credit? That's crazy! And so we're not supporting kids like we need to support kids, and if we're going to and if we're going to continue this program at the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar price tag, we need to do better or we need to reconsider what we're going to be doing with that. So as we, like I said, I have several questions that I didn't ask today, but I want to have a really good conversation about it and we can't do that today because the people, like I feel like there should be other people in this room that can maybe help us understand, thank you.
Wow, so is there, is this something that we should talk about on the twenty-second before voting? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I mean, you can't turn it around right now, all right? But I mean, I think it's some, we can think about some things we can do to support students this year in that program as it comes up. And that's my concern is like, we don't need this school that I mentioned where it's just like eighty, a hundred, ninety, like are they doing this program again this year? And what can we do to help them out? Like, do they have a change in teachers? Is it like, we're just saying, you should do this because it's really cool? I mean, what's, what's happening? And so I'll have, like I said, specific questions I'll put in the, in the tracker, but we just need to understand what we're, what we're doing, right?
So what we can do is we'll, we'll receive those questions. I'll work with Dr. Wilson and Patty, Rodriguez's Deputy Superintendent of Teacher Leading Learning, provide a response early, carry it as a separate agenda item and we'll, we'll kind of make a determination before you even get there. But I appreciate the comments and I appreciate the opportunity to get with the team.
And let me just say, oops, I'm sorry. Let me just say, it is a valuable program and I'm not saying that it's not because there are places where kids are knocking it out of the ballpark. I mean, like a hundred percent of kids are getting like calculus credit and like other stuff. And I'm not saying some schools shouldn't have it, but I'm saying if we know kids struggle somewhere, that's called equity. We're supposed to give them what they need to be successful. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, thanks for raising that up, it's really important. Superintendent, for bringing us additional information on this. Okay.
Yeah, I just want to add, so superintendent, will you be doing that for all the, all the schools?
So what we'll do is, I mean, I have to, I'll get trustee Hunter's questions, we'll crosswalk that and I expect the questions will be probably broad, so the response will have to include all the schools. But yeah, I don't see why we would only focus on a couple of schools. I think if we're going to provide a response, it would need to be holistic across the program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yes, trustee.
When we bring the extra information, can we also have an understanding of what this means for students who go, do go on to go to college? If they have, of course, they didn't pass, how it impacts scholarships, admissions, the whole package of, I know a lot of scholarships require you to have a certain GPA, you know, kind of what is the impact? Thank you.
Impact of the program or impact of the?
The impact of not being successful for students who want to go on to college and feel like they're doing something that prepares them, not getting the support they need to be successful in our district, how that impacts them when they go on to college? If it jeopardizes scholarships, kind of makes students less likely to be successful down the road rather than more, thank you.
Yes.
So this just brings, this is something I've been really concerned about, is our mentoring. So as we find these, these numbers is extremely high and this, you know, it's just, to me, unacceptable. If we have a mentoring program, you know, what, what are we doing different? Do these students have mentors? Because if not, that's something we could look at. How do we reorganize our mentoring program to support these students? Thank you.
Yes, trustee Zapata, I think that'd probably be a separate discussion because I think there's an opportunity to expand that and talk about primary and secondary, elementary and secondary. Because I think that there's a larger conversation that we need to have in how we support our students with mentoring programs in the district. And so I think that's how we want to bring it back, specifically for these. We can touch on it, but I think the conversation you want is probably a little more broad as well. And we'd be happy to have that one as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, so this ends our regular agenda preview. We will now recess the open meeting at ten twenty-one PM and move into exec session pursuant to Texas Government Code, sections five-five-one point oh seven four, five-five-one point oh seven two, five-five-one point oh seven three, five-five-one point oh eight seven, five-five-one point oh seven six, five-five-one point oh eight two one, and five-five-one point oh seven one. When we are finished, we will return to the open session. We have a workshop, we still got a workshop going on as well and the night is still young. Thank you all so much. We'll, yes. Ten twenty-one. All right, we are now back in open session at twelve forty-one AM. Do I have a motion on agenda item seventeen point one, the transfer appeal on behalf of QC?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, having a motion by trustee Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to affirm the decision of the superintendent. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, great. Do I have a motion on agenda item seventeen point two, the transfer appeal on behalf of LH?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we will now vote. Having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to affirm the decision of the superintendent. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously. All right, now we'll move on to seventeen point four. Do I have a motion on the transfer appeal on behalf of DOC? Oh wait, hold on, did I skip one?
PP.
Okay, we're on PP, okay, apologies. Do I have a motion on agenda item seventeen point three, the transfer appeal on behalf of PP?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, having a motion by secretary Boswell, a second by trustee Zapata to affirm the decision of the superintendent. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously. All right, do I have a motion on agenda item seventeen point four, the transfer appeal on behalf of DOC?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the relief requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, having a motion by secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to affirm the decision of the superintendent. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously, thank you, board members. All right, so I know we had mentioned earlier that we were going to have a little workshop on the academic vision and theory of action as well as guiding principles for the budget transformation. Unfortunately, it has gotten so late, is twelve forty-three AM and we think it's in the best interest of our students if we make these, have these important discussions at another time. So we stay tuned, they'll happen this month, just not tonight, so either on the fifteenth or the twenty-second. So secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, having a motion by secretary Boswell and a trust, a second by trustee Zapata to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at twelve forty-four AM, thank you.